Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of council. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof? I see none. Then we will move right along and go to the approval of the council minutes. Looking for a moving and seconder to accept the minutes held of the special closed meeting on July the ninth. Counselor Dunn, Counselor Wilkinson, discussion on the motion, all in favor, carried. And then the same thing for the council meeting held July ninth. Counselor Hammond and Counselor Verbeke with question?
Your worship, thank you. I, in reviewing the minutes from the last council meeting, I think we were remiss in not saying a thank you to Jody Raffoul. When our prime minister visited to Highbury a couple of weeks ago, he played out there in the baking sun for about three hours, and I think we should have said thank you to Jody and his band for being there. So I just wanted to make sure it got inserted into the minutes.
Okay, can do that. Is there anything else arising from those minutes? If not, then all in favor, motion passes. Court of revision, we'll be moving into that next, and the deputy mayor is the head of that organization, and Counselor Dunn and I are not part, so we'll sit back and relax.
And with that, I'll open the court of revision, moved by Counselor Wilkinson, seconded by Counselor Verbeke, all in favor, and that's carried. So Luann, we're moving on to the engineer's report for the Hooker Drain and Culvert.
Sorry, I haven't received any appeals for the meeting.
Does council have any comments? Moved by Counselor Verbeke, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson, all in favor, and that's carried. So the second one is the Lebo Creek Drain. I'll leave that up to you.
Again, there has been no appeals received.
Wow, this is an easy one tonight.
They're both 100% development related, so the developer's paying 100% of the cost.
Moved by Counselor Hammond, seconded by Counselor Verbeke, all in favor, and that's carried. And with that, I'll close the court of revision, moved by Counselor Verbeke, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson, all in favor, and that's it. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next report is one regarding the Danforth Avenue, Seacliff to Hayward sewer separation assessment imposition of fees. Ms. Orton, you're starting us off? No? Yes?
There's one more train.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss? Wow. Ah, yes, I did. Okay, then let me back that up, and we'll do reports of staff and delegation. So we're talking about the Hooker Drain, then Luann.
Yes. As this report relates to those two court of revisions, so basically, in the summer of 2017, administration received a request from the owner of 636 Mercia Road Eight to amend the drainage assessment to reflect the change from vacant land to an automotive garage development. Baird prepared that report. During the same period, Baird also prepared a report for 635 Mercia Road Seven, which is known as Flavor Fresh. By way of a clerical error, Baird was not provided the most current drainage report on one of the Highway 77 branches of the Hooker Drain and the Lebo Creek Drain. So through those changes, we're asking council today to accept the new report to amend both those Section 65 reports. The original report was dated August 15th with a revision date of May 29th, 2018, which changes the updating the reference information to the different engineers' report for the Hooker Drain, the northwest branch, and the Hooker, sorry, the Lebo Creek Drain northwest branch, and the Hooker Drain, and amending their corresponding assessment values. It's also noting the release rate of 209 liters per second to match the one- and two-year pre-development runoff, and inclusion of the schedule for future bridge replacements on the Hooker Drain. The engineer also completed a review of the Hooker Drain and the Hooker Drain Highway 77 branch for 636 Mercia Road Eight, which includes the increased total volume based on the new development. At this location shall not adversely affect the performance of the Hooker Drain, as long as the storm water management facility limits the total release rate allowed into the drain at a one- and two-year pre-development runoff rate of 48 liters per second. And also, the Hooker Drain Highway 77 branch affected area has been decreased by directing part of the parcel back to the Hooker Drain. So there is no financial impact to the municipality. All of these changes are within the engineer's estimate of the 3,500, which was also received as a securities upfront.
Okay, thanks very much. Questions from council? Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you, Luann. In going through this, I'm talking about, I'm on page 40, when it talks about that retention, is that done with a retention pond to control those flow rates?
Yes. Every pond has a pipe, and within that pipe, there's a reducer in it, so that'll reduce the rate to what this report allows it to be.
Okay, so it doesn't affect the size of the pond, then?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. Luann, in this engineer's report, we had one engineer's report, and it didn't have all the information, and they had to redo that. Was there a secondary charge?
No, no. What the engineer, it was both our error and the engineer's error, so we both agreed that there would be no increased cost to this project.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Verbeke, support by Counselor Dunn, discussion on the motion, all in favor, carried. And then 11.2, so I don't skip by that one as well, so in regard to the Drieger drain.
Yes, this is the Drieger drain, the new petition that council had adopted back in September of 2016. No, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, the preliminary report. Okay, so we're asking council to award the tender for the Drieger drain to Rebarde Escavating in a total amount of $138,626. Council may recall this project beginning in 2014, whereby a petition was signed by the road authority to correct some drainage issues along Mercia Road Six. Within this project of 138,000, there will be 10 hydropoles relocated, and under the Drainage Act, Section 26, we are allowed to assess that cost directly to the hydro or the utility company. So I am noting within the financial impact statement that the cost is over our estimated amount, but that you'll notice there has been a large increase in the market for steel, and in this case, there is 12 steel pipes going in, which has ultimately increased the cost, but that cost will be borne of hydro one anyways. So our municipal share of the project budgeted was $38,000, and we're looking at an estimated share of $40,000, so we're within our budget still. So I'd ask that council adopt this report and award the project to Rebarde Escavating.
Okay, thanks very much. Questions from council? Moved by Counselor Hammond, supported by Counselor Dunn, discussion on the motion, all in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to the report regarding the Danforth Avenue, and Ms. Orton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sewer separation for the area of Danforth Avenue was the next step in the continuation of the municipality's sewer separation program, as was presented to council in 2014. The extent of the reconstruction was Danforth between Seacliff and Hayward, shown on the map on the next page within the report. A public information center was held in February 2017 to notify the residents and the property owners of the work, and the municipality's intent to assess a share of the cost to the benefiting properties. Thirty parties attended the meeting and provided similar comments. Residents supported the need for separated sewers and new curbing, but felt the property owner's share of the work was too high. Residents were also concerned about the current traffic situation and perceived speeding. On June 5th, 2017, the municipality was notified that the project was approved for 75% funding, up to $3,410,000, from the federal and provincial government under the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund. On July 10th, 2017, the tender for the project was awarded to J&amp;J La Pera for the amount of $2,787,000. Specifically, the works included in the tender were the installation of a new sanitary and storm sewer, removal of existing combined sewers, replacement of old water mains, new trees, and complete reconstruction of the roadway and sidewalks. The project moved forward with a shared cost from the benefiting properties for the sanitary sewer component of the works. For this project, the shared cost recoveries from the properties are limited to the construction of a new sanitary sewer and private sewer service connections. All other works, such as the roadway, curbing, and sidewalk, are funded from the CWWF program, water surcharge program, and general taxation. Historically, these projects have proceeded pursuant to the local improvement regulation under the Municipal Act, which provides the authority to municipalities to undertake certain works, such as sewers, water mains, curbs, and sidewalks, that are for the benefit of specific properties within a geographic area, and assess those costs in whole and part to the property owners. Once approved as such, the costs that are assessed have priority lien status, meaning that the amount may be added to the tax rule against the property in respect of which the amount was imposed, and that amount, including any interest, may be collected like taxes as a debt from the owner and any subsequent owner of the property. There are other charges that have priority lien status in addition to those under the local improvement regulation. Section 391 of the Act authorizes a municipality to pass bylaws imposing fees and charges for services provided by it or for the use of its property. The Act states that the costs included in a charge may include costs incurred by the municipality for the establishment of capital assets, and those charges may be imposed on persons who receive a benefit at some later point in time. Section 398 of the Act indicates that fees and charges imposed by a municipality constitute a debt of the person, and the Act authorizes the treasurer to add fees and charges to the tax rule of the property and collect them in the same manner as municipal taxes. The fees and charges regulation, charges for the use of a sewer system have priority lien status. This project will be assessed under Section 398 of the Act by passing a fees and charges bylaw imposing the charges. Those charges then may be added to the tax rule and collected in the same manner as taxes. When assessing costs to owners in connection with sewer separation project, the municipality imposes a maximum fee per meter of frontage and per connection cost. The maximum fix fee is set by the annual fees bylaw, which includes a unit cost per meter for the construction of the sanitary sewer system, and a per connection cost for one sanitary connection. According to the 2018 fees bylaw, the maximum fees for a sanitary sewer are $320 per meter of frontage and $2,000 for each sanitary connection. In this case, the actual cost of construction was $291.69 per meter of frontage, therefore, this cost was used to assess the benefiting owners. The actual connection cost was greater than $2,000 each, therefore, each owner was assessed at $2,000. Attached to your report is an assessment schedule that includes a breakdown of the fees to be charged to each benefiting owner. Benefiting owners were sent a letter advising them that council would be considering the imposition of the assessments at this council meeting, and were advised that they could seek to address council as a delegation. The total assessment recovery from the abutting owners for construction of a new sanitary sewer and private sewer service connections is $528,765.98. As noted earlier, the other costs associated with roadway, curbing, and sidewalk will be funded from the CWWF program, water surcharge program, and general taxation. The benefiting owners will have the option to pay the entire assessment upon notification or add the fee to their tax rule and pay it over 10 years at 5.04% interest. So the recommended action at tonight's meeting is that bylaw 4618 to impose fees to benefiting properties in connection with the Danforth Avenue sewer separation project be brought before council for consideration, and thereafter benefiting owners be advised of the assessment for their property and their payment options.
Thanks very much. Are there any questions from council from admin? Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. Ms. Orton, I've got two questions for you. The one is, you said the connection fees were greater than 2,000. Can you give us an idea of how much greater they were?
Just slightly over 2,000. It wasn't vastly over. I don't have the exact amount, but it wasn't too terribly much in excess. However, the fees bylaw indicates that it's the lesser of the actual and 2,000. And Alex just came up, he might have the number for you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The service connection cost per property was $2,300 per connection.
Thank you for that, Alex. And then secondly is, why do we charge 5.04% when the bank will charge 3%?
Ms. Roach?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. Our infrastructure Ontario borrowing rate for the municipality is 3.04% when I checked with them on July 3rd. The municipality charges a 2% additional fee to do that debt service thing, so we would have to go out and raise debt, or sorry, obtain debt on the landowner's behalf. So there are options for the benefiting landowners. They can go out and get their own financing. Certainly, that is not one of our key strengths, to be a borrowing institution, but we offer that service to property owners.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, your worship. Ruth, maybe you can help me understand the one column here on Schedule A. So we have the sanitary, it's really difficult to read, sanitary mean accessible cost per meter. I look at that as the cost of the construction, basically. The next one beside it is the sewer hookup, which is the sanitary service cost per, then we got our total. It's the column after that where it says, I think, engineering, 15% of construction costs. That row there, I looked for in the fees and schedule in the explanation, I didn't see that one highlighted. Can you, can somebody explain that one to me, please?
Mr. Sharon?
Thank you, your worship. In any construction project, there are a number of different costs, costs associated with design, with contract administration, with a number of things that are associated with the contract, preparatory work, and those sorts of things, as well as the actual construction project by the contractor, the general contractor that's going to carry out the work. And so previous councils have essentially said that they will limit the amount of engineering fees that they're going to charge residents on these type of local improvement projects to 15% of the construction cost, so that's the actual cost that the general contractor incurs by doing the work. In some circumstances, projects are a lot more complicated from a design perspective, and therefore, we incur a lot more than 15% of the total cost of the construction works, and previous councils have basically said, and we're not going to charge any more of that. In this particular circumstance, those charges were right about there, about 15% of total construction cost, and therefore, that's the reason we use that capped number of 15%. These are actual costs out the door to the municipality, all of the time that goes in from engineering services to manage the design and contract admin, manage the consultants, manage the contractor. We don't charge any internal overhead charges to projects, these are all dollars out the door.
Sure. And Rob, I'm just thinking back to my public meetings that we had before then, we always had the cost of construction, of course, that was cost recovery, and the hookup, but that portion right there that you just explained, I don't recall hearing about that one. Was it explained back when we had the public open houses? I could have missed it, but was it explained then?
Typically, in the past, we have not created that separate column that basically pulls out and highlights the engineering fees, but I think from previous feedback we've received in discussions on that matter, we felt that it would be appropriate to actually show a column that showed the engineering fees, as opposed to previous considerations where we would just take the costs allocated specifically to the sewer that's being charged as a local improvement, and then add the engineering fees on top of that, recognizing that there's a capped limit on that, and include that in the number. So in previous years, you may have not seen a column calling out engineering fees, but those fees were included in the cost of the sewer per meter in consideration of the connection fee.
Okay, Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you, and I'm a little unsure as to who to direct a question to, possibly Alex or Rob. When you had the meetings with the residents, and you had indicated there was about 30 that showed up, they expressed some concerns about the speeding, but how many comments were made about the road itself? Do they want to see it look like the other southerly section that just got done, or do they want changes made to it?
Mr. Sharon?
The matter tonight and those references are in regard to the southerly section, so that is...
So yeah, what we're talking about in this report is just the part that we've already done, so we haven't even looked at the north end of Danforth. Okay, no more questions from council? We do have three delegations here. I understand they want to appear one at a time, so I'll invite Mr. Roger Williams up first. Let you state your name and your address, and you have all of five minutes to express your opinions.
Mayor, deputy mayor, council members, my name is Roger Williams, I live at 106 Danforth, where the sewer separation has been. Anyway, I'd like to start off, the first question here, according to this letter here, just to clarify something here, the cost of the projects will be collected from benefiting owners following the passing of a bylaw by council? Now, has this bylaw been passed, or we're voting on it? Does anybody know?
Well, tonight, this is what's before council tonight.
Has it been voted on, though?
No, we're just, we're here just doing our discussion now.
All right. Okay, I have gotten up a petition, I've had it signed by 45 people on Danforth, the rest I was not able to get a hold of either on vacation, or we just missed, and for whatever reasons and stuff. My petition here, as you've got a council and the mayor, and that has a copy of that, I'm going to read what I have here. "We, the residents of the affected section of Danforth Avenue, are being asked to pay for the updating of an existing sewer line which falls under town maintenance. This is the responsibility of the town of Leamington, not the residents. As residents, we question, where is all our property tax money going? Where? Some of that money should be used to pay for this pipe. Secondly, where is the sewer sewer charge money? Take care of sewers? We pay this on our water bill? What's going on with that money? Thirdly, you elaborated on this $2,000 sanitary sewer charge. Why are we paying this? We had sanitary sewers in the first place, they put, what, a six-foot, maybe an eight-foot section of pipe there? That's $2,000 worth, plus? Fourth, why are we being charged an engineering charge of 15%? And from what I just heard, it sounds like we were the guinea pigs at Danforth for this, because it isn't going to be done again. So I don't know about that. And then at the end, about the interest rate. Why are we paying an extra 2% on the interest rate? That's a good question we have, and it's all signed by the, on my petition here, it's all signed by these people, 45 of them. Now, I have some newspaper clippings I like to read concerning this matter that I've accumulated over the years, or, excuse me, over the months and stuff. The first one is, we have Mr. Mayor speaking here, where Leamington Council had approved a budget of 1.8% increase. That's December of 2017, and I just want to read this paragraph here. "This year's budget is a sustainable and responsible budget that will provide and enhance services of the municipality of Leamington," says Mayor John Patterson, "while keeping our reserves at a health level of $54 million. Our goal is to improve the quality of life of our residents," he added. Well, I don't know, this here sewer thing, I don't know about quality of life, but a lot of us, that's a big burden. I don't know about quality of life, it just burdened us on that. Secondly, there's another article here where the mayor had his breakfast at Colossani's on January 24th of this year, and he's talking about, I'll just read this paragraph here for everybody. "Patterson told the record crowd of 150 guests that the municipality has planned well for the future, tax-appropriated, and is now in a very healthy position to take advantage of allotted of government funding under the new grants structure, funding to help improve and upgrade the infrastructure. Looking forward," he said, "looking forward," said the mayor, "it is possible that Leamington could receive grants totaling $4 million per year, each year for the next 10 years." He said, "the upside to this, it allows various municipality departments to do some long-term planning for roads, sewers, sidewalks, and other infrastructures needed. That said," Patterson said, "it also means the future council and administration must also budget 25% of that, or $1 million per year, from property taxes revenue, so they can make use of the funding allowed." Thirdly, there's an article just printed here, July 18th of 2018, concerning Mill Street. I read the article, but it seems that when you first quoted this, you were quoted at $1.6 million for all the work to be done there, while apparently something has happened and you were short $1.3 million. Anyway, council, I'll read what's in the paper here. "Council also was told that $1.3 million in additional costs will come from surpluses in sewer and water accounts." I would like to know, if you've got a surplus in the accounts, how much money is in those accounts? And why wasn't it used to pay down Danforth and the other streets that you've done the construction on, instead of burdening the taxpayers with this? That's my answer, my question to the council and the mayors and stuff like that, because it is a pretty hefty sum. I've talked to a lot of the residents there, a lot of them can't afford it. We've even had some say they're going to sell their house and move. Well, that's not right, and I don't think that the town of Leamington should profit off the residents. That shouldn't be. I've been in the town since day one. That's not called for, personally, that's not called for, and I'm sure a lot of other people will back me up on that. So, like I say, the question I have here is, how much surplus was in these accounts? If you've got that much money to top up, to pay for Mill Street, why wasn't something allocated for us to cut our costs down? And thirdly here, what I'd like to know is that on the petition and that... Thirdly, there's an article just printed here, July 18th of 2018, concerning Mill Street. I read the article, but it seems that when you first quoted this, you were quoted at $1.6 million for all the work to be done there. Well, apparently, something has happened and you were short $1.3 million. Anyway, council, I'll read what's in the paper here. "Council also was told that $1.3 million in additional costs will come from surpluses in sewer and water accounts. I would like to know, if you've got a surplus in the accounts, how much money is in those accounts? And why wasn't it used to pay down Danforth and the other streets that you've done the construction on, instead of burdening the taxpayers with this?" That's my answer, my question to the council and the mayors and stuff like that, because it is a pretty hefty sum. I've talked to a lot of the residents there. A lot of them can't afford it. We've even had some say they're going to sell their house and move. Well, that's not right. And I don't think that the town of Leamington should profit off the residents. That shouldn't be. I've been in the town since day one. That's not called for, personally. That's not called for. And I'm sure a lot of other people will back me up on that. So, like I say, the question I have here is, how much surplus was in these accounts? If you've got that much money to top up, to pay for Mill Street, why wasn't something allocated for us to cut our costs down? And thirdly here, what I'd like to know is that, on the petition, I know we probably aren't going to have to pay, but this fifteen percent charge and the $2,000 connection fee, I don't think so. I don't think so. Personally, we shouldn't pay for anything. We live in here, that's what our property tax money goes for. So I don't know what's going to come of this, but I want everybody to know, and I've got all these people behind me backing me up. Something should be done about it.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Quick comments before we leave, because you may want to stay there for a bit, because council may have questions of you. But the tax bill you pay every year, like I pay every year, almost half of that goes to the County of Essex and to the school board system. So, so cut your tax bill in half, and that's what we get to use here in town. Our reserves are healthy, and that's a very good thing. We could be like other municipalities in our area that have very, very poor reserves, and they have a difficult time getting any kind of government grant structures that we benefit, all of us benefit from, on the various projects that we do in our town. So it is important to have good, healthy reserves in your municipality. I'm trying to think of the Mill Street situation. We were, we, council really pushed on this redevelopment being done, and the engineering that was done in-house was more of a guesstimate than anything. So it caught all of us off-guard that it came in at 2.6. There's no denying that. We had monies left over from, it was a drainage or sewer, sewer grant monies that we had allocated for that specific project anyway, so we were able to cover it. So ultimately, we're not going to have to go back to the taxpayer for that project. And it's more than just sewers. This is the redevelopment of our uptown, of the property that we own, you and I and everybody else in this municipality. So if there's a justification for it, that's the best one I can come up with right now. I would like admin to answer, I'm sure they are writing down their particular questions that you raised, and I'd like them to address them, but I want, well, maybe I'll let them address them first and then come back to council and see if they have other questions. So Mr. Sharon, if you'll start?
Sure, thank you, your worship. And certainly, if I miss anything, we can come back to the items. I mean, I think what's important to note is the history behind sewer separation in Leamington, why we do it, and how we've been approaching the sewer separation initiative in town, at least for the last two decades and probably before that. A large part of this municipality over the years was built with combined sewers. Essentially, as council's aware, that means storm rainwater and sewage from toilets and other various appurtenances in the homes ends up in the same sewer. That's the way they did it years ago. That has been prohibited since the 1980s. However, we are left with this legacy of the system. In 2005, the municipality did a comprehensive review of that and essentially determined in $2,005, we were facing well over $100 million a challenge to separate those sewers. But again, even prior to that, the municipality had developed a policy of a local improvement to help fund parts of these sewer separation projects. When the municipality comes in and separates sewers, it inevitably results in the complete deconstruction and then reconstruction of the entire roadway and municipal infrastructure. And that's a very expensive endeavor. And in order to try and escalate the amount of sewer separation that can happen in the municipality, and essentially allow the municipality to afford sewer separation, one of the policies adopted by council and has been maintained by council for the last couple decades, and that is a form of local improvement for the residents. If you take a new subdivision as an example, when that subdivision is being built, all of that infrastructure is paid for by the developer and ultimately the person purchasing that house. And so, you know, the question with regards to, well, why should the residents have to pay for, you know, this one of the two sewers? The answer is essentially that subdivision was never built with that particular infrastructure. So it is an improvement, and it is an improvement specific to that neighborhood, and it is, you know, under that methodology that councils of the past and this council has moved forward with sewer separation. So we did hear that, you know, the cost to residents was about $528,000. The total cost of this project was just over 3.1 million. And so I think it's important to note that the amount being billed back to residents is just under seventeen percent of the total project cost. With regards to, you know, where do taxes go and other sewer surcharge funds? Sewer surcharge in this municipality goes 100% to the operation and replacement of our pollution control plant. So when people pay their water bill and there's a sewer surcharge on that water bill, that goes 100% to the plant. There's an urban tax rate in the municipality that's been changed to a sewer tax rate, because now 100% of that sewer tax goes to fund the sewers. And the reason that exists in this municipality is because we have two distinct areas. We have a serviced area and an unserviced area in the urban area, in the rural areas. So rural residents are responsible for all of their own systems, their weeping beds and their septic systems, and urban residents have a sewer, and they pay a specific tax to maintain and replace those sewers. As an example, I think this year, where we're just over $2 million was the total amount that was levied for all of the sewers in the municipality to maintain all of those sewers and to have a capital replacement program for those sewers. As council's aware, that's grossly inadequate. In order to have a fully funded capital program for our sewers, we would likely have to have an urban tax rate five to six times, maybe even greater than what we currently have. That's not practical, obviously, for this municipality, and so that's why, you know, we're always looking for funding for these capital projects, and that is also why policies like a local improvement, when we come into neighborhoods and do sewer separation, allows the municipality to move forward and complete these capital projects in a more timely manner. The fifteen percent engineering, I mean, I assure these residents and you council, it's not a guinea pig. The charge has always been there. We just didn't specifically call it out and show it that way, but it was included in the, in the cost to residents. So this group is not a guinea pig. There's a, if there's been, that policy has been in place, at least since 2005 or '06. I think it was updated most recently. So at least the last 12 years, and I think even beyond that, if we went back to previous policies of council. The CWF funding, yes, this particular project did come in under budget, and again, that certainly, against the budgeted numbers, it was a benefit to everybody, including the residents. The residents' share of the project costs weren't directly impacted by the fact that it came under budget, so it's not like the project was under budget and they paid substantially more. They paid, the residents are being assigned costs, as it was always the plan to assign those costs, the cost of the smaller sewer, the sanitary sewer, the one that's less expensive, as well as the connection. So you can think of a main, and the reason there's a specific connection charge is because some residents, some parcels have multiple connections, depending on the nature of that parcel. So we typically always call out a connection charge. Again, that's why you see, you'll always see in our fees bylaw, a fee for a per meter frontage of sewer, as well as a connection charge. I think I covered it. Is there another topic?
Probably from the engineering side of it, but Laura, I think you were, Mr. Williams, right? You were asking about the town profiting from the taxpayer. We've had this one thrown at us before, but you're referring to the interest rate.
I've sort of been there, but the only thing is, after all these years, you decided to bring it up. So it makes it feel like Danforth was the guinea pigs on a fifteen percent.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's what, from listening to him speak in the first place, that's what it sounds like to me. And to me, it didn't seem right. I mean, all of a sudden, it comes out of the blues, well, we're going to start putting it on the paper now, so the people know.
Well, I think that's been council's effort here, is to start pulling everything out, you know, everybody's talking about transparency. So if we can pull things out and break it down much finer detail for everybody, then you have a better understanding of it.
But see what we're standing from, coming from? All of a sudden, it shows up, and he just said that. We never did it before, now we're doing it.
Well, the fee was always there. It was always there. It was always included in the cost, but just never broken out in a call.
More detailed.
Yep.
And one more comment, too. I don't think we should be paying for a mistake that was made 50, 55 years ago when they did the subdivision. Because I know right now, rate for a fact, that pollution plant can't handle what they have now. And you continue to issue building permits and have more apartment buildings going up? What's going on?
Well, you're mistaken on the pollution control plant, I can tell you.
Well, I understand that, but just from my standpoint, where we were in that subdivision, now all of a sudden, we're separating sewers. We're putting storm sewers in now, separate. We've got sanitary separate now, and we're footing the bill.
Yep.
It doesn't seem fair, your mayor. It does not seem fair. We're all hardworking people here. We're supposed, I'm supposed to be retired. I went back to work because I got to pay for this now. And there's a lot of people in my shoes, and there's a lot of people worse off than me. It's just a big hardship that is imposed on the residents, you know? And should have been some clarification, or somebody should have went out and asked. Because that's a hefty chunk of money.
Yeah, yep. If, I guess the talk around the table we've had before, too, is if the taxpayer were to pick up all the fees for all the sewers that we have to replace, our taxes would be beyond what any of us could afford. So this is the way to do it. I mean, you'd end up paying for the sewers that are being installed on Peely Drive.
Right.
How does that help you?
Well, it's okay. We all live in the town, we should all work together.
Yep.
Okay? That's the main thing, and that, eh?
Agreed.
But my main thing here is if we're paying that cost, I don't see fit that we should have to pay that $2,000 for connection, because we were already connected in the first place. You just put a new pipe in the ground, and what is it, six or eight feet that went to hook up to the old? Okay? And the fifteen percent, well, that should be absorbed in the initial cost. We shouldn't have to pay that.
Again, the fifteen percent is in the cost.
I'm just telling you what I'm thinking here, okay?
Yep.
All right?
Yep.
And I guess one of the things here, too, I just don't like to see other bylaws arise or come up without having input from the people? Because if we're have to pay for things, we should know this before the bylaws are even passed.
This was all discussed publicly, this whole project.
How many years ago, your honor?
I don't know. How long have we been working on this one? Ruth?
Well, this would have been in the overall plan, so it's just going through the itemized plan, just indicating from my report that the open house was in 2017. And then, of course, all the residents did get notice of tonight's meeting, so there would have been the public open house. Of course, the award of the tender would have been at a meeting of council, and then this evening's meeting.
So tonight's, the bylaw that you're referring to tonight is just us simply saying, yes, proceed with the billing of the project, which has already had all the public hearings that are required.
Okay.
And everybody has had a shot at, and trust me, we've heard a lot, so.
Okay.
Okay? Before you leave, any questions from council? No? Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, more of a statement. You know, Mr. Williams, I think it's important, I know a lot of the folks that are sitting here, and I think that it's important to understand that we here as counselors are just like you. We work for a living. And I can tell you that, you know, this is a topic that has come up, and we've dealt with it many, many times. And it's not easy for us as a group to deal with this, and to hear the concerns, and to hear people say, "I'm going to have to move because I can't afford it." And we understand that. Moreover, especially down on Point Peely Drive. People were begging us to try to do something, and we were looking at it, and we've tried and tried again to reduce their costs. If they were to do my street tomorrow, I would have to pay. Counselor Bill Dunn, sewers aren't separated. If he did his street tomorrow, he would have to pay. And he owns one on Point Peely Drive that he's paying for. You know, that isn't much consolation, but when you understand the big scheme of things, you know, these sewer separations are important because the water or the wastewater that's going to that pollution plant has to be treated. So if you're treating clean water, which it does, you're paying for a service to treat clean water that doesn't need to be treated, as opposed to just treating wastewater. So that's why these sewers, it's important to get them separated. So the clean water goes to one area, and the wastewater goes to another, and that's where you spend your resources and your money on, trying to get that sewage clean. You referenced the pollution plant. You said you didn't think it could handle that. Well, I can tell you it will, because we have spent, in the last four years that I've sat on council, and by close to saying, six or seven million dollars or more, to upgrade that plant, so it will handle these types of things. Because the problem was, it was inadequate because of the water and the waste, the clean water and the waste, like the water from your sink goes into the same drain as the water from your toilet. And that's what we're treating, and we shouldn't be. Because that's a cost to you and everyone here as a property owner as well. That comes out of taxes. So, you know, whether it be, and as I said earlier, we've heard these, and you know, and it's not like you're, what you're saying is falling on deaf ears, because it's not. You know, whether it be Point Peely Drive, Bellville Line, I have friends that live in Parkdale, their costs were $17,000 per household. And they all said the same thing. "We can't afford it. What are we going to do?" To your point about the two percent, I think Laura hasn't addressed that. She did it quickly with Counselor Dunn, but I don't know if we want to go back to that and talk about it again. Laura can better explain what, you had referenced the two percent over and above the bank rate, and I think Laura can better explain that than I can.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Very similar to the Drainage Act, which has a provision in it to set the borrowing rate for the municipalities for benefiting property owners at two percent above the infrastructure Ontario rate. So that is the same that we will apply, or we have applied on all of our other infrastructure projects, as well as future ones. So the intent is not to, you know, profit or anything off of the property owners, simply to have that cost recovery for the additional administrative work that's associated with going out and securing that debt for the property owners. Like I indicated to Counselor Dunn, there are alternatives for property owners, and seeking their own financing may be an option as well.
Sorry, we've got somebody up here asking questions already, so, so, does that help at all, understanding at least?
One final question. I heard that there won't be any more sewer separation instructions in the next five years. Is that true?
Not that I'm aware of. I think we're going ahead on, we're doing one right now on Ear Street South.
Yes, I understand that.
And I know the plans are all over the place.
Carnation Street Two is slated pretty soon for that, but after that, is that true? That's what I heard.
Not that I'm aware of. Mr. Sharon?
Through your worship. No, there is a comprehensive sewer separation plan that we have. Council will see it in the five-year plan. There's a strategy as to, insofar as what areas we're separating first and why. I expect this municipality will be doing sewer separation initiatives like this for the next 50 years, basically until every combined sewer is separated. And at the current rate, it's quite a few decades before we get there.
And it's not just Leamington, it's every municipality having to do the same thing, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Next up is Mr. Dresser, Todd Dresser.
Mayor, council members, thanks for the opportunity to come in front of you and speak tonight. Roger and I are neighbors. I live at 98 Danforth, along with my wife. We've been through all of this super sewer separation thing. I understand the whole concept of the sewer separation. What I don't understand is, we had a sewer that worked, and now we have a new sewer, doesn't work any better. Toilet doesn't flush any better, sink doesn't run any better, none of that's changed for us, so I don't really see how I benefit from that. I understand the town does, pollution control plant does, but I don't see how I benefit from that, nor do the rest of the people in the affected area. Actually, what I'm here to speak about first is the second petition regarding the separation of storm water that we've been asked to do. We got a letter on May 10th saying that we had to separate storm water, which i.e. eaves trough runoff, sump pump runoff, all that, some sump and discharge, all that stuff, from the sanitary sewer, or a sanitary hookup that we have on our property. And I've gone down and got a petition. You guys see what it is? I can read it quickly if you want. We, the residents of Danforth, are affected by the sewer separation, received a letter dated May 10th from Town Engineering stating that we have one year to reroute any storm water sources, i.e. sump pump discharge water, eaves trough runoff, et cetera, to the storm sewer connection at our cost. The cost of this will vary between $3,000 and $7,000 plus, depending on each individual situation, whether your line comes out, your sump pump is in the back of the house or the front of the house. There are people who have to rip up concrete, there are people who have to rip off decks, there are people who have to move air conditioners, there are people who have to move off sheds, and then they have to pay for the contractor to come in and do this. So we're talking, someone here could be, along with paying for So we're talking, someone here could be, along with paying for the sewer, could be looking at $17,000 or $18,000 to do this. I think that's a little much, personally. I understand the whole concept, but I, I would think that if you go through all of this, you've recouped and separated all the stormwater on the road, which is, I would guess at probably 80% of, of, of what you're dealing with. And if everyone were to pull their eavesdrops out of, out, mine are already out, mine are never in the ground. If everybody went through and did all of that, the only, the only thing left is a little bit of, of, of water from weeping tile around the basements. And I can't see that being a huge tremendous, uh, uh, impact on your, uh, sanitary sewer. I really can't. I mean, there's gotta be a, a spot here where somebody gets a break here because you, I mean, I've talked to everybody on my side of the road going down. You've got, 75% of us are retired. I'm not yet, but, but I'm close to it. But 75% of those people, residents, are retired, living on fixed incomes. And they're just making it. Just keeping their house and making it and paying their bills and getting by. And now the sewer separation comes on and now you're expected to do this. A lot of the people don't even know what this is. Didn't understand the letter at all. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that letter should have went out when the very first letter went out concerning the project so that people would, would, could understand what was going on. Maybe someone come around from the town and see individually what people have and, and informing people on what they have to do so they have time to gather prices and maybe, maybe build some sort of reserve. These people don't have a reserve. Most of these people, they're either retired, or they're widowed, or they're very young fan, uh, people with, with young kids, trying, trying to make ends meet. And to saddle them with all of this, all at the same time, I, I think is a little much to ask. So I would think if, I mean, I don't know what your setup is, but, I mean, like I said, you've probably, by pulling the eavesdrop, so you've got 90, probably 90 to 95% of that water already. To, to, to ask someone to turn around and go and dig up their entire backyard or to, to run a pipe from a sump pump, I think that's a little silly. Or from weeping tile around a foundation, I think that's a little much, to be honest with it. So I would ask that council and, and, and engineering could, would consider that. Somewhere, there's gotta be a break here. If we have to pay for sewers, you know, I, I, I guess we have to pay for sewers. But the rest of this is just, just astronomical. And I've got people that I talked to, I had a little, one lady in tears. She says, "I have to move. I can't do it." She says, "I can't pay for the sewer, let alone pay for the rest of this that you're telling me we have to do." So like, what are we gonna force people out of their houses now to pay for a sump pump line? I think that's getting a little carried away, to be honest with you.
Okay. Um, I don't know who wants, Mr. Sharon?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I think it's important to note that, um, the private disconnection of stormwater into the new storm sewers, again, is a, a standard procedure for all of our sewer separation projects. So it's nothing new that's being asked of the Danforth residents. It hasn't been asked of every other neighborhood that has been separated over the last couple decades. The second part of it is, you know, certainly, um, just on the surface of it, um, stormwater being pumped from some pumps into a sanitary sewer is a concern of engineering. Um, the sewers, you know, we once had one large sewer that dealt with all of the stormwater and all of the sanitary sewage. When we come in and separate the sewers, we put in a large storm sewer to deal with rainwater, obviously, because there's a lot of peaks there during storm events. And then we put in a small sewer, a sewer that is sized to deal with sanitary loads and not stormwater loads. So from a sizing perspective, there would be concerns. They're simply not designed to deal with stormwater. And, you know, in a, in a storm event, all of the homes along that, all of their sump pumps pumping into the sanitary sewer, cause, cause, could cause sewer backup and sewage to, you know, come up through the various devices that are connected to the sanitary sewer. Uh, over and above that, it is simply not permitted under the building code. Um, so any type of drainage system and a sump pump is included in that, it's prohibited from being connected to a storm sewer. It must be connected either to a combined sewer or to a sanitary sewer that's written in the building code. It's under section seven, it's 1.5.2, uh, storm drainage systems. So it's, it's mandatory under the building code.
You confused me there, though. You're, you're saying the stormwater is must, under the building code, must be connected to the sanitary sewer?
No, it can, no, no. It, it shall not.
Shall not.
Did I say must be? Forgive me.
I might have misheard.
Stormwater shall.
Shall not be.
Shall not be connected to a sanitary sewage works.
So under the building code, it must be.
It must be separating, connected to a storm sewer. Or to a combined sewer.
Questions from council? Deputy Mayor?
Rob, what about just disconnecting the sump pump from any kind of sewer? Is that possible at all? Can that, can that be an option?
Your worship, I would recommend that, um, residents talk to the building department directly about their solution. And we've, we will recommend that to, to anyone who calls us with questions. Um, a building inspector will go out there and will, will look at the certain situation. My understanding that, is that there is a possibility, um, to put some stormwater drainage over land if there's the ability to do that. Obviously, disconnecting a sump pump and, and simply outletting it into your yard where there's a possibility that could negatively impact your neighbor, um, is problematic. And so the building department will want to have a look at that. But again, I'd recommend the residents call the building department. They will send an inspector out. If they have a proposed solution that is to not connect the sump pump directly to the storm sewer, but let's say put it over land into their yard, there could be the possibility that that would happen. But again, it has to be looked at on a case-by-case basis and that's ultimately, uh, up to the discretion of the chief building official.
Are there questions? Okay.
I understand that that's, that's, uh, 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 standard practice. I understand all of that. But you're, you're taking a 50-year-old subdivision here and you want to change the entire way that subdivision drains at our cost? That's, that doesn't sit well with me. But you expect all these people, you can't get blood out of a stone, guys. Like, you know, if people can't pay, you can't force them out of their house because they can't put a sump pump into a sewer. Like, give me a break here. Who's gonna go to the bank and get money at 75 years old to, to put in a sump pump line? Or to, to spend $7,000 or $8,000 or $10,000 to rip up their, their deck, their backyard and all this shit just to, just to put a, a line in a, in a sewer? Like, come on, let's, you've gotta give your head a shake here. Let's get serious here.
Sure, Mr. Dresser, you're addressing council on those questions, so.
Yes, I am.
Um, when you look at the total project of, of 3 million, y- you're not paying for everything. You're not. You're paying for a portion of the, the, the separated sewer that you now have. The rest of it is all being replaced by us.
I, I understand that, sir. I understand all that.
And I understand that it will put hardship on people. It put hardship on me when I lived on Robson Road. And it's one of the reasons we sold and moved from there because we knew we couldn't afford to, to cover the separation of the sewers and all the works they were going to do down there. It, it, it is what it is. But you're, you're given, it's like, you don't have to pay it overnight. And I, I'm gathering by this comment that in all ins, not all instances, that issue you're worried about with the stormwater is going to affect everybody. But I'm not, I'm not an engineer, so I have to allow the professionals to make that determination. But, you know, a- again, i- it's, it's something that can be spread over a 10-year period. Hopefully, that helps some people. But other than that, it, it has to be done.
Sure, you can spread it over 10 years. Sure you can, yeah. You're gonna spread that payment over 10 years and your mortgage payment and your, and your car payment and your groceries. And then you're gonna turn around and try to get money borrowed from the bank or credit unit to do this. Where does that end? It all has to be paid, whether you spread it out or not. It all has to be paid by somebody.
Understood.
And it's by that person in that home. And if they can't pay it, what would you like them to do? What's the answer? So when the end of the year comes and, and that person can't do it, because when you have that contractor come in and, and do your work, you gotta pay him. He's not walking away without his money.
Yep.
So what would you, what would you have them do? What would we do in that case? You tell me.
Okay. I don't have an answer for you.
As far as sewer connection fee, that was to, to Roger sitting there. I talked to Mr. Doug, uh, Alex here right before the project even started. And then I went and met with him because we couldn't make it to the initial meeting. There, I met, he showed me the drawings and all that stuff. We had a pretty good discussion. And my first question to him was, "What does it cost us to hook up to this, uh, sanitary sewer?" Because we already have one. "No cost. We unhook you, you already have one, we hook you back up." I said, "No cost." Remember that conversation? No cost.
Alex, if you don't mind?
And now I get a bill for two grand.
I, I don't recall saying no cost.
Well, you know, I don't, I'm not sitting in front of council making that up.
As I've, as I've explained through the multiple, uh, public information centers that I've had on multiple projects, Mill Street, Danforth, Marble Chestnut, Fox, Parkdale, uh, Erie Street South, Oak to Askew, the Erie Street South project that we're working on right now, that connection fee is for the T in the main, for the service from the main to the property and reconnecting your existing service at the property line. The wording, connection, um, a lot of residents get tripped up over, "I'm already connected, you're reconnecting, you're just taking the two pipes and joining them together." Well, that's not the case of just the two pipes and joining them together. So we'll, we'll reconnect your property because you're connected, but there is a charge to put the, the new connection from the main to the property line.
Well, I wasn't given that information when I asked you the question, so.
Okay.
And I did ask you that question twice, just to make sure.
Right.
I had a sewer, my sewer was connected. You guys un, you, the town disconnected it, ripped out the sewer, put a new sewer in. Why would I have to pay for another connection when I already had one? Why would I have to pay for that? It was paid for 50 years ago when the subdivision was put in. Why would I have to pay to do that again? Why would those 62 homes have to pay for another connection when they already had one? That's fine you want to separate sewers and it's fine you want to do all that stuff, but why would the residents have to pay for another sewer connection when they already had one? I don't understand that. I don't care what you tell me.
We really don't want to. To be honest with you, we really don't want to do sewer, sewer, um, improvements, but we're mandated, so.
No problem.
And that's, that's it. And to reconnect to properly have it done so that you're going into the stormwater, not in the sanitary, I, I'm sure that's, all the engineering and all the costs are, are why they're there. And I, I, I feel the pain. I do. I'm not denying it.
Yeah.
And I do not have an answer for you.
I would, can you get me an answer?
I, I think we've, we've done as much as we can.
What's your answer to these people? What do we tell, what do I go back and tell these people?
Well, sir, and I'd like to comment on that. Your, your worship will simply say that, um, there's no two sewers, there's two connections per home now. There's a storm sewer and a storm sewer connection, a sanitary sewer and a sanitary sewer connection. All of the costs associated with a more expensive sewer by policy of council, um, is absorbed by the municipality and all the costs of the smaller, second, less expensive sewer, including the mainline sewer and all the connections to the homes are billed to residents based on council policy.
Okay.
So what is our answer on this, uh, uh, stormwater separation then? What do I, what do I tell these people? You gotta go and borrow $10,000, try to get 10 grand somewhere so you can do this?
Well, I think the answer was given already that if they will simply call in and ask the engineer, building department, whichever, to come out and have a look at their individual situations. And if they can be addressed easily, then they'll, they'll be addressed easily. If not, then I assume work has to be done.
Again, what do we do about the cost?
It's your property.
The problem doesn't go away, does it?
No, it doesn't.
See, it doesn't matter, you stretch it over 50 years, it doesn't matter. On here, it doesn't go away.
True enough.
Does it? So.
The glories of homeownership.
You can, you can tell these guys what they have to do then.
We are.
Yeah, I know you are.
Is there anything further?
That they gotta find the money from somewhere and they gotta do it, so.
Yep.
Okay?
Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Todd, um, you know, I addressed Mr. Williams and I'd like to, like to say something to you as well. So you have, it isn't much of a consolation, but you have a better idea of what we're faced with. If we said that we're gonna pay for these sewers, not just on your street, but all the ones that have been done in town, obviously, our surpluses would do a little to nothing. But you know who'd be sitting out here in the audience? All the people who have paid upwards to $100,000 for a lot in a new subdivision that the sewers are already separated. They're gonna say, they're gonna be here going, "Why should I pay for Todd Dresser's separated sewer on Danforth when I just paid $80,000 or $90,000 for a lot in a new subdivision somewhere and mine, because I knew it was separated and I paid for it into that, so why, why should I pay for his?" Now, that may sound callous, but that's, that's the reality. That's, that's what could happen. We'd have a thousand people sitting out here saying that. To your point, Todd, too, about, uh, the separating of your sump pumps, yes, I think you need to take full advantage of that. Because you don't want to see people have to reroute their backyards. It would make sense to me to be able to hook it into your, to your, not your sanitary sewer, but your stormwater sewer system. But again, if the town's offering a system whereby they'll have somebody come out and take a look at it, by all means, have them come out and take a look at it. It may not be as drastic as what you think it might be. Then again, I mean, if you want to look at the dark side of it or the expensive side of it, it may to some point. And then I don't know what you do with the water. Because if you can't, if you can't put it out in the yard because of your neighbors is sitting lower than you are, and if you can't put it into the, the stormwater sewer, I don't know what you do with that water then from your sump pump. So you do have a dilemma. And I would certainly take advantage of the offer that's been made about bringing up some of these engineers or, and have them come out and take a look. That's what I think you could say to these people. Let's try to take advantage of what's there.
Well, we don't have a, we, that's something we do have to take advantage of. And that's one of the things I mentioned, where someone should have come, should come around and take a look at what individual people have so that they really do know what to do. Because most of us don't. You know, I'm not an engineer.
And, and nor am I. And I wouldn't know what to do either.
I don't know what's required and what isn't required.
But if, if the offer's there, let's take advantage of it. It's, obviously, it's gonna take time when you've got 60-some people who are on that line, but, uh, as I said at the outset, I know what I'm saying isn't much of a consolation, Todd. But you understand where, where I'm, at least I'm in my decision-making and why I, I think I can speak for the rest, this is what we're faced with. And you're right. And I've had people call me on the phone and cry too. And believe me, not one or two, many of them, same lady about four or five times, about, down on, uh, Point Peely Drive. So we're not callous to the situation. So we're not callous to the situation, believe me, we're not.
I understand Point Peely Drive is a big one, because you've gotten into a lot more than what was planned, and they didn't have any sewers to start with. So I understand that there's a difference, there's definitely a difference in the two projects. Same idea, but there's still a difference, but...
But every sewer separation we do, it's going to end up costing those people in those neighborhoods about the same thing that you're looking at right now. There's, there's no way of getting around it. It has to be done, first of all.
I understand.
And I know your toilet flushes the same way as it did before, but what you are doing, and what Counselor Hammond referred to, is you are now flushing your rassuage into the rassuage drain, and your stormwater is going to the stormwater and it goes out to the lake. So we don't have to process that at the pollution control plant anymore. And ultimately, that's the goal of the entire municipality.
Mm-hmm.
So it's gonna take us a long time to get there.
I'm not saying I disagree with it. It's a good idea, I'm not saying it's not.
Yeah.
It's, the impact on the residents, it's not just that project, it's all the other stuff that's equated to that project.
Yep.
That causes the issue, because that's over and above all of this. Yeah, we can finance our taxes, on our taxes for the sewer.
Yeah.
But you can't do that for the other one.
Run the immediate bills.
How many payments are you gonna make?
Yeah. Understood.
That's the problem.
Yep. Understood.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And the final delegation today is David Joseph.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is David Joseph, I live on 108 Danforth, I'm Roger's neighbor.
Good neighbor.
So first things first, I didn't get a chance to sign the petition because I was one of those neighbors who were on vacation, and so if you can add my name to the petition, that would be great. As a resident of Danforth Avenue, I have been very patient and understanding with regards to the sewer separation project. However, I do not agree that we should foot the bill for this project. Just like the two have previously said, this isn't our project. First of all, the project was imposed on us, and yet we're being asked to pay. When we went to the first information session in February, each of the residents expressed their concerns about the payment. No one was happy, and yet the response was, "We have to pay regardless, it's in the bylaw." However, since 2014, new development has occurred in Leamington, and yet you've decided to waive the development fees for new construction, even though that was in the bylaw. It was reported that the construction value of new development in Leamington tripled from 2014 to 2017 for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and greenhouse construction, yet no one had to pay for the new development fees for the one hundred and fifty-eight million dollars worth of new construction in 2017 alone. And yet for the residents who are here, we must foot the bill for this sewer separation project, because all of this development, and for further development to come, because it's in the bylaw that you're ready to pass tonight. I'm asking you to reconsider which bylaws you decide to do away with. The residents of Danforth should not be asked to pay for their half of half a million dollar share for this project. As for the grant that was received, the CWWF indicated in its proposal guidelines that the grant funds could be used to pay for road restoration only if funds were used to restore the roads to their original state. If you look at Danforth today, it's not in its original state. The money spent on the total redesign of our road could have been less, hence making the cost of the project less as well. Danforth has seen a drastic change, and as a result, this has put a huge burden on all of its residents. The design was intended to create a traffic calming neighborhood, however, this is not the case. The road is much more narrow, which has encouraged cars to drive in the middle of the road instead of their respective lanes. We have sidewalks and bumpers on both sides of the streets. In front of my property, for example, we hear at least one car a week hitting the curb when making the turn from Carolina Woods to Danforth. And I'm on the busiest section probably in Leamington, it's the house that used to have the horse. So if you don't know which house that is, you haven't lived in Leamington long enough. So we have cars honking their horns at each other on a daily basis, and yet the design was intended to slow traffic down and to discourage others from taking this road as a through street, however, traffic looks the same and is more dangerous than ever before. On my property, I now have four traffic signs in front of my house, which includes a hazard sign, a no parking sign, a ten-kilometer turn sign ahead, and a share of the road sign. And on the other side of my house, I have another ten-kilometer turn sign and a no parking sign. So it's no longer the horse house, it's the sign house. I have two kids who love to play outside, and yet even them at the age of seven and nine, know not to play anywhere near the sidewalks because of what they've seen over the past few months. I've made my complaints, from the traffic, to the grass that was ripped out from my property, to the weeds that can't stop growing from the soil and seed that the contractor have provided, along with the multiple signs in front of my lawn, and a new driveway that I had to pay for because the construction cracked my entire driveway. I called the town on six occasions, and yet not one person returned my call. I have six reference numbers that they gave me. And when I did reach somebody, I was able to talk to the project engineer, and he said that he would come and see this project himself, and to someone who told me that my driveway issue was between me and the contractor. That's the communication I received for the project you imposed and for which you're making me pay. And last year, I received a letter outlining the details and proposed the cost for the Danforth sewer separation project. For my property alone, the letter indicated that I would owe over thirty thousand dollars. Then subsequent to that letter was a second letter outlining a miscalculation had been made, and I was supposed to pay around ten thousand dollars. And now the latest letter indicates that my costs were approximately twelve thousand dollars, that's if I pay over ten years. So regardless of the confusion and miscalculations, the federal provincial governments were going to pay seventy-five percent of the project regardless, and the municipality was to pay the rest, approximately five hundred thousand. With well over fifty million dollars in reserve, why are we asking the residents to pay when the money to be allocated for this project like this one is coming out of our pockets, when we already pay our share of taxes, and when the municipality decides to send more money on future developments such as a four hundred thousand dollar skate park just down the street? Use that money to pay for the projects that impact the majority of residents and those who visit our town. I can tell you that there are more people that use Danforth Street on a daily basis that will ever use the skate park, the amphitheater, and the bank theater combined. And yet you decide to fund, find the money to fund these projects, but not for the imposed projects that have a direct impact on the residents. So I ask again that you reconsider the bylaw tonight. So everything that has been said, you may have come in already with your decision made, but really think about it and examine the overall design, the construction, and the scope of this project. Please understand that we have paid our taxes for years, and that we should not foot the bill for this project, the project that is being impacted by the new development in our town, and that could have been paid for by the new development fees that you've decided to waive over the past few years, since 2014. Thank you.
So I think there's a misconception as to what development charges can be used for, and they're certainly not there for doing sewer improvements. So that, just take that concept out of your mind altogether. The new development that has occurred, it's already been mentioned, that when the property owner, or when the buyer buys the land, the developers already put the sewers in there, and that buyer is paying for those sewer lines. So again, the development charges don't come into play. The CWFF funding that you referred to is not, and you said it should have been used for the cost of the roads and improvements, all that kind of stuff, you guys aren't paying for that. The five hundred thousand number, rough, round number, is just for the separated sewer. That's all you're being assessed for. The rest has already been taken care of by the funding that we've got and the general taxpayers. So it, all you're paying for is that separated sewer, that the government is mandating that we put in when we do our sewer replacements, and yours is one of the streets that we're doing it on, and the other hundred million that we have to do for the rest of the municipality. I'm a little distressed by your cracked driveway comments, so I'm going to leave that with administration and see what answers can be found there. And when it comes to spending four hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand, whatever it's going to be, on skateboard parks, or on the amphitheater, or on the dock, these are all improvements for everyone. And I disagree with you. There are going to be more people using all of these facilities than are using Danforth. It's a qualitative life thing. If we just stopped doing everything, why would anybody bother coming to this municipality? So I will fight that kind of an attitude. I think it's necessary, that's why council is here, is to use our tax dollars, not just to benefit individual homeowners, but for the municipality as a whole. I'm very much supportive of all the things that we've been doing, and will support future councils in doing the same thing. So just my perspective on everything. I don't know if, Mr. Sharon, do you want to address any of those comments at all, on the CWFF funding and the road costs, the whole project, and reducing, and seriously, going into a discussion about the reserves that we have? Those reserves aren't just there for us to spend willy-nilly, a lot of them are attached to certain departments and just can't be spent on whatever. So while we're healthy, it doesn't mean we could just go spend it to reduce costs for other people.
Your worship, I think my comments are going to be limited to a couple items, and the first being, you know, the reserve number you just spoke of. When fifty-plus million dollars of reserves is being quoted, a large part of those reserves are non-discretionary. And then even within the discretionary amount of the reserves, they're specifically allocated to capital replacement, lifecycle replacement, based on the type of infrastructure that we'll replace under that particular fund. As an example, our engineering reserve, which is the area in which we budget all of our road reconstruction, all of our bridge replacements, all of that, it's about two million dollars. Not a lot. Infrastructure reserves, which is specific for the sewer, we're projecting four point, two point four million dollars by the end of the year. You know, as an example, the total sewer costs were well over a million dollars just to do Danforth. So if you put that into perspective with regards to how much infrastructure and the cost of that infrastructure the municipality owns, there's really not a lot of money in reserves to deal with these sorts of items. Though comparably speaking, you know, we are healthy compared to other municipalities, and all municipalities in Ontario are facing this infrastructure deficit and this, you know, what could become an infrastructure funding crisis in the near future. And then development charges, you know, certainly, I just, on that, development charges are charged in various municipalities. We used to charge them here in Leamington, we do not any longer. But they're charged to fund future off-site infrastructure growth demands that are caused by development. So this would be, to use this area as an example, there, we have a draft DA to reconstruct County Road Twenty, and Secliff Drive, all the way to County Road Thirty-three, and it calls for a road widening, it calls for bike lanes, and a number of different things along that stretch. Development charges allows you to put a fee on development that's occurring in another part of the municipality, recognizing that additional growth will cause pressure in shared infrastructure like that. Development charges can't be used for reconstructing existing infrastructure or improving infrastructure in a particular neighborhood.
Okay, thanks very much. I don't know if that helps clear up a little bit of it, but it does get very confusing, and I know we make it sound all rosy, but our hands are tied at certain times.
Okay. No, I understand. My question is, how much did the municipality put towards then this project? If the government paid up to seventy-five percent, you had just told Mr. Dresser here that, no, we paid for some. What did the municipality pay for this project?
Mr. Sharon.
Is there an amount that you paid and then we're going to pay?
Mr. Sharon?
Give me your wish. Do these things get complicated? You know, as an example, this particular budget, there's a budget for the sewer, a budget for the road, a budget for the water main, I think that's it, right, Alex, four different cost centers? Approximately a million. Own source funding.
Hmm? Okay.
One was budgeted numbers, I think this one is actual, so if you just have a minute.
No, let's just wait.
One point five million, your worship, from own source funding.
From other source funding?
From own source. One point five municipally raised own source funding.
Own source, yes, okay.
Five hundred thousand dollars from the resident, and therefore...
That would be one point four million. centers that the whole project fit under. While they're doing that, there was a question earlier on about four million dollars that I talked about, I can't remember which one of you brought that one up. But it's a funding source that we have been fighting, all municipalities have been fighting for, for years. It used to be, gosh, if you go back into the eighties, I think we had regular funding from the provincial government that we could actually depend on. And then that funding program stopped, and we've been fighting ever since then to get it back. And that's the reference in that news article about an additional four million dollars coming to what we suspect will come to Leamington that we can now use for all of the other projects that we have to do, whether sidewalks, roads, curb gutter, whatever it happens to be. But in order to qualify to get that four million dollars, we're going to have to come up with twenty-five percent funding of that amount to get it all. And that's the same for all municipalities across the province. So I forgot to touch on that one while we were waiting. I guess maybe while we'll let them do the math, I had Counselor Wilkinson up for a question as well. But if you're gonna go to them, there's not much sense, because they're looking up the numbers.
Who really got left here?
Do you want to just wait? Because I've got Counselor Dunn, Counselor Hammond as well.
Go ahead.
So I don't know if you're staying away from those guys. All right, Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. Mr. Joseph, I feel your pain, I really do. I can, I can more than anybody, because I have Point Peely Drive, I have William Ave, which is scheduled for sewer separation, so I'm going through the same thing. But what is explained to me, as well as I have another property that also will have to have sewer separation, so that's free. The understanding I have is the reason why we need to do the sewer separation was explained to me with the sewer plant, when we have that hundred-year rain, those big rains, all that stormwater goes in there and goes right to our pollution plant, as Counselor Hammond alluded. That, when it comes in so big, it can't be processed, so then it's being flushed right straight out to the lake. So that's causing a big problem. But not only that, it causes backup, because it's all coming into your back, into your basements, into the sump pumps, it's gonna cause sewer backups into your, and that, if you've got finished basements, that's gonna cost huge amounts of money. And eventually, the insurance companies will not cover that. I know that for a fact. And especially with the fact of what Windsor's going through right now with their flooding, and I just heard that they're approving about eighty-nine million dollars worth of infrastructure for sewers to try and alleviate their problem that they had of these last floods that they've had over the last couple of years. And you've heard about it on the news, it's drastic, millions to millions of dollars worth of damage. So I feel for you, but in the same case, I know I'm going to have to pay as well. And as they alluded, the new people they're putting in these brand-new homes in, and their sewers are paying for them, how can I allude that, pay that fee to go to them as well as myself? Anyway, that's all I have, sir.
No set? Rupp?
Yes, your worship.
So the question was, how much did the municipality actually pay in the project?
Yes, so, I mean, I think it's also important to note that, you know, when council does their budget, they took, they take a look at available revenue sources. In these particular circumstances, some of them are for direct in-year taxation, some of them are for reserves, some of them are for grant programs. They're not necessarily grant-specific, and it's at council's discretion at budget time, sort of, where to put those funds. In this particular project, one point eight was CWWF, the municipality paid seven hundred and five thousand from own source funding, and the residents are paying five hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Okay, thank you, but I'm on the ministry's website right now. It says municipality of Leamington, separation of sewers on Danforth Avenue, Hayward to Secliff, that serves sixty-five homes. From the municipal, or from the federal government, I believe the first budget was, or the first grant was one point seven oh five million, the second from the provincial government at eight hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and that's on the ministry's website. And that's where I'm confused, because if the total cost of the project is just over three million dollars, the ministry paid two point five million, the municipality is paying nothing, and we are footing the bill. Five hundred thousand dollars, and what I'm trying, it's, that's where we're confused.
Your worship, I can assure you, we complete the grant applications to the ministry, and the treasurer's right next to me, and she knows the funding that is received. A lot of the numbers that may be published are previous budgetary numbers, I can't speak to what the ministry's posted, but I can assure you, we've submitted grant applications, requests for reimbursement of expenditures, and municipality has front-ended all of the expenses on this project, and then they submit for reimbursement based on the actual invoices that are received. Alex collects all of those invoices, inputs them, finance takes that information, prepares spreadsheet, submits grant applications to the ministry, the ministry reimburses us specifically for the expenses that we put in. If the ministry has data on their website, I'm gonna suggest it's perhaps older information and not reflective of actual circumstances, because any unspent CWWF funds on that particular project have been reallocated.
One last question with regards to the redesign of the street. As I said on the ministry website, it says that the funding for the street, it had to go back to its original state, so if the funding was being used to pay for the redesign or the construction of our street all over again, it had to be returned to its original state for use of that government funding. It does not look the same. I want to know why the significant change. When we were here, a design was shown to us, it was out in the lobby, looks nothing like what we've seen. I don't understand where was the other consultation with the residents. And so if we're trying to be as transparent as possible, that was our only session where we all came together, and these things weren't discussed. It was, oh, see what's on similar to Fox Street, they got the bumpers there, great, that's a one-way street. Try watching Danforth, when people are trying to turn from Carolina Woods, it's entertainment, I kid you not. The kids come by from the different houses, my kids got their tablets out and are filming, and sometimes we just, we wait to get out of our driveway because it's crazy, and my kids are baseball players, we live at the baseball diamond, so I understand the importance of keeping everybody entertained and supporting all of the recreation and all of the activities that we have in this town. And so we live at the diamonds, that's where they're at right now. And so, but it's hazardous, and I don't know what happened with this design, and why we thought that we can go ahead and do a totally different design, where the funding stipulated that the reconstruction of the road had to go back to its original state with the CWWF funding. Not, I know we're not paying for that, but I'm just trying to figure out why we're going, why we're doing different things that were being brought forward initially, so.
Okay. Mr. Sharon?
All right, your worship, certainly the matter before council tonight is specific to the assessment to the residents based on the local improvement charges for the sewer. However, I will simply say that, you know, the original state does not necessarily mean you have to put the road back, you know, identical to what was there, there's new engineering standards. I think those particular clauses are meant to prevent municipalities from taking advantage of monies that are intended for one purpose and using them for another, like making a two-lane highway, a four-lane highway, and those sorts of things. It's expected that, you know, new design principles would be brought in, and upgrades would be made to existing infrastructure. Specific to the road design, you know, we have heard very similar comments, both from council and from people who use the road. We've also heard opposite comments from residents on that road who are happy with the design because it is resulting in traffic slowing down. Again, I know that that may not be the consensus, but it can... We, I'm simply saying to council that we've heard that from residents. So, you know, we take that into consideration. And we certainly take into consideration the feedback, both from residents, homeowners and council with regards to future design of projects in our attempt to slow down traffic. When we hear from residents of local streets that their roads are being used more like collectors as opposed to local streets, and they ask us to look at trying to slow down traffic. You know, this particular project took advantage of ball boats and chicanes to try and accomplish that. Very new recommended engineering standard on road design. You know, we're hearing feedback. We're going to take a hard look at the next design where slowing down traffic and traffic calming is, is an objective of the project.
I had Counselor Wilkinson had questions.
Thank you, Worship. I got a question, then I also have a comment at the end. Recently, we see an email go out here regarding the grass situation over there, grass weeds. And I've heard it mentioned by two or three of the delegates here tonight. Has that situation, has it been somewhat rectified here with the residents? Is everybody understanding what's going on with the grass? Alex or Rob, do you want to explain to the, do you want to speak to that tonight?
Mr. Sharon?
Yes, Your Worship, I do understand that some residents are experiencing, you know, issues with a lot of weeds in the grass and it dying. You know, certainly we recommend it from day one, that if people watered it, cut it, it would help. Not saying that's the root cause, but it would help. Our recommendation, certainly we're not going to come in and plant grass in the middle of July. It's simply not going to take. So we're recommending that if people, residents, have issues with the grass, let us know. Our intention is to come in in the fall and likely overseed with some additional seed, maybe hydroseed it. But in recognition of the fact that we are experiencing some issues with the grass not growing the way we certainly, I mean, we don't want to deal with this issue either. We had, we had it in the contract for topsoil and seeding. The contractor's been back a couple of times. It's still an outstanding issue we have on the contract. And so we'll, we'll come in the fall and take another look at it.
Thank you, Rob. I wanted to, before I gave a comment, I wanted to hear all three of the delegates here tonight. People, this is the, you know, this is my rookie term here with council. This is my third year doing this. And I think this is my fourth or fifth sewer separation project I've been involved with. And these are not easy projects to have to, you know, impose upon good residents like yourself. I know Danforth Street, I know it's not filled with multimillionaires down there. And I know that's going to be hardships are put on to the people who got to pay for these things. It was the same way over on Marlboro Chestnut, Parkdale, you name it. There is hard situations. And we get those calls, and we get those emails. And they're, yeah, it's a, it's not easy to, have to make a decision that's going to put a hardship on every one of you. I take that very seriously. I look at the crowd here, I see Mr. Brown, Mr. Fodessi, Jerry Lou Brown, Mr. Augustine, Diversus, Josephs. I know you people, and I take this seriously. And, but we do have an obligation. That is the crappy part about this job. You know, when people ask me, do you like this job? I say, I like it about 85% of the time. But there is really crappy situations that you have to make a decision on here to keep up the infrastructure of the town. We are obligated to do this as well. We have a responsibility as the council up here to keep our infrastructure proper. We have a responsibility to the environment to do that as well. So I, I, I don't want you to think that I take this lightly. You know, when I make the decisions that are going to put hardships on every one of you, I realize what I'm doing here, and I don't care for doing it. I don't enjoy doing it, but I have to do it. And I'm going to have to pay the piper too at some point. It's going to come down my road, it's going to come down Larry's road, everybody else's road here. Communities across Ontario, Canada, we have to upgrade our infrastructures. And it's kind of the crappy part that goes with this job. So that's my statement to you people, and I hope you're satisfied with it.
Counselor Hammond?
Your Worship, thanks again. Mr. Joseph, and I don't really want to have the last word, but I did want to bring out, you know, you, in your submissions, you made some great points. You talk about the grass, we know it's a problem. We drive up and down there, we see it, your driveway, and obviously that needs to be corrected. The road diet, that's not great either. But one thing I kind of wanted to take exception with is that, you know, when you make a point about the sewer separation, we talk about things like the development charges, you know? And we've labored over this as a group about eliminating development charges. And you know why they're done though? We take away the development charges to bring those builders back to Leamington. They're building 200 or 300 homes in Chatham and elsewhere to bring them back here. So we bring them back here so they can provide jobs, maybe for your boys when they get a little bit older, who might want to drywall or plum or do some other things. And we recoup those, those development charges. Now, we just had a discussion about this not too long ago, Laura. I think it's, is it eight years to recoup the development charges? Six years. It takes us six years, and we recoup those for taxes. And then they're ongoing forever. That's the reason why we eliminated development charges. You talked about the bank theater. This municipality has put very little of anything in the bank theater, outside of giving them the building for a dollar. Because there was a large sum of money left to the municipality for the arts, and a big portion of that was given to the bank theater. And over and above that, those people raised over a million and a half dollars themselves of a small group of people that do what they're doing there, for people that do care about the arts. You know, and you backtracked a bit when you said, because I was going to come at you about the new field house, soccer field house, about the new building at the Ball Diamonds. When you talked about the skate park, understand what we have a group has been trying to do over the last four years, and that's provide something for everybody. And when you mention your boys are at the Ball Diamonds all the time, I'm sure you appreciate that new field house that's there. Because I know I played ball down there a million times and went to that old shack, and you wouldn't even go in the bathroom. So that's why we do what we do. So to your points that you raised, they were well raised. And if it's any consolation to you, I don't like the diet on Danforth either. And I've made my thoughts known about that.
Deputy Mayor?
There's almost nothing left for me to say. They've pretty much covered it all. I've sat and I've had conversations with both Mr. Williams and Mr. Dresser. And he knows that we're all of the same mind, we get it. This is my 12th year doing this. And my first year was with the Robson Road project, and it, it was excruciating. It almost made me rethink why I was even doing this. I will tell you though, that every time we are considering a sewer project, it doesn't matter if the homes are on Foster, if they're on Marlboro, if they're on Armstrong Drive, if they're on Danforth, no one wants to pay for sewers. We don't have a choice. If we go into our reserves, we will end up with no reserves. We won't be able to do anything. And that 50-year outlook for getting all the sewers, the combined sewers eliminated, it won't be 50, it'll be 150. So we have a certain sense of responsibility here for, for our whole community. We, we have to do these things. We try and be diligent, our staff looks for funding opportunities. There is nothing else that we can do. And, and usually Counselor Wilkinson does not beat me in words, but today he actually said, said it better than I could say it. We, we all struggle with it. We try to make this a better place. This is the hardest part of our job. And same with what Counselor Hammond said, we're trying to make it a better place. If we only put money into roads, no one would want to live here. We have to make it, we have to do the whole picture. It has to be good infrastructure, replacing infrastructure. We have to have reasons for people to come here, to want to raise their kids here. So we have to look at the whole picture and balance the money. That's what this is all about. Every year when it's budget time, we're balancing it. It's like you at home, trying to figure out if this is a year you buy one of those big TVs, or is this a year you go on vacation? Only for us, they aren't the sexy things. We're trying to do the, the nuts and bolts, the gritty things that are under the ground and in the infrastructure things. That's the bulk of it. If we can throw in something wonderful like a skate park or like an amphitheater, that's great. But that isn't something that we do on a regular basis. Development charges, getting rid of them, it's to bring more people to live in here. So that piece of pie, that tax pie, gets cut into smaller pieces so that you don't have as much to pay for. We're, we're trying to do the best that we can. And, and we, we're really over a barrel here. We cannot take on, the other residents cannot take on the cost of this. Because then you will be taking on the cost of Point Peely Drive, Armstrong Drive, and we'll get nowhere. So this, to us, and as I said to Roger and to Todd, find us a better solution, and we're willing to, to listen to it. But there is not a better solution. We are doing what is best, what is most reasonable. It may not seem fair and equitable to you, but it is fair and equitable to the community at large. I'm sorry for your burden, it would be a burden to me as well. We live in the country, so we have the Sydney, well, it's a drain, you don't care what drain it is. We're assessed for a drain every time there's work on it. We have our own septic system too. We all have, we all have burdens of some kind when it comes to sewage and drainage. You're not in it alone. I'm sorry that we can't do it any different. To each one of you, I would love that we could make it better, but we can't.
So you kind of end up taking the, the tail end of all this.
All right. No, I appreciate, I appreciate all of the feedback, all of the comments, and I understand. And this, that's the reason why we're in this town. We want to offer the best for our kids, we want to offer everything possible for them. I'm a teacher. I know what kids want. I'm going to, that's, that's the reason for me working. I work well with kids, and I want to be able to do exactly what I can for them. And we offer quite a bit in this town. My only thing is, is if we don't like the current system of how things are done, let's put our energy into trying to find a solution instead of doing more. Because doing more isn't going to change the problem. It's not going to find a solution. And so instead of going here and my whole thing is building this and building that and not charging this person and not charging that person, but then we still have a lot of people paying for the sewers. If that is the major problem and the major burden for all of our residents, let's focus our time and energy on that instead of trying to build more to try and fix a problem that is never going to get fixed. And that's where I am, sitting as a resident, trying to see, well, why is this happening? Well, here's my major problem, and why aren't they listening to my problem? And a lot of the residents have these problems, and it's every single person that is having this impacted on them. They don't really care to see the other development at this point because right now, they can't control that. What they can control is happening on their property. And so when we look at change, we want to look at the impact that's going to have, the immediate impact on us, before looking at future development and how we can live differently in the future. So understand where we're coming from as well. If we don't like the current system, that is why we elected you. And I'm worried that when it come election time, I don't have room on my property for signs, for the election signs, because I already have six traffic signs on my property. And so to see your name on my property would be very difficult, in all honesty. I, I, it's, it's very frustrating because we have immediate issues that need to be resolved. And those are the issues that we want to see. So we want, we want answers. And so please understand from our perspective, it's not an attack. We know, we elected you. And so you're working on our behalf as well. And so we respect the decisions that you make. But at the end of the day, if we are not happy with something that is happening in this town, let's work together to find a solution instead of having the same thing happen over and over and over again. And so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much as well. I just wanted to go back on some comments I'd made too, and one of the ones I wrote down that I also missed getting back to, it was actually, it was Mr. Williams had asked it about, where do our property taxes go? And trust me, we all ask that question every, every day. Somewhere on the municipal website, and I don't know if it's on our Facebook page or on the, the website itself, there is a pie chart that shows the breakdown of how, again, I'm talking around numbers, take the first half of your taxes and send them off to somebody else who uses them, and keep the other half here that we get to use. And that, you know, covers things like your policing, your fire, your snow removal, and, and on and on and on. And it's broken down in that pie chart. I know you can take it. Laura, do you know where it is, or do you? What, is it on our website, or?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, it is on our website under the property taxes. And I think it's a property tax lookup.
Oh, property, okay. So if you have time to do that, and I, I do it because I have to explain to my wife why we're paying as much as we do. And when you break it down, and then I look at my cellphone bill and I look at my TV bill, I just think, wow. In, in my own opinion, I'm getting a much better deal here at the town than I do on the niceties that, that I like to add on to my life. But we get it. And I think you've heard it up here tonight, that we get it. We've, we feel the pinches too. And we do our best to hold our line on taxes. There have been past years when taxes have gone up substantially. And in the last eight years, this council has struggled really hard. And I think if, if my average is correct, we've, we've held it to 1% on average per year or less. We've even had years where we've had zero. Not the wisest thing to do, had zero. And I think you can hear the, the problems they have in Windsor for doing that. But we, we've done what we can. And, and we do like to add the niceties, but we do have to do these sewers. We have to do the drainage for the farmers. We have to replace the culverts. We have to do everything. It's, it's massive what, what council is asked to decide on and what administration has to try and figure out to get past us in the budget deliberation. So we're doing the best we can with what we've got. And I'm sure you're not going to be happy with our decision tonight, but at the same time, we still have to make a decision. So if council doesn't have any further questions, I'm going to come back and ask for council's decision on this, the recommendations before us. I'm sorry, you'll have to, pardon? Okay, so the question, so the people at home can hear it, is when, when do these payments actually start for the residents? So Ms. Roach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our typical process for billing these type of projects will be that the residents, I mean, assuming that council goes ahead and approves it tonight, the residents will receive a letter. And we typically give about 45 days to determine whether they will diventure with the municipality or they will seek alternate financing. There is an administration fee associated with the diventering. And at that point, at that point, the owners will be sent an invoice. And then the expectation will be that they will pay in full within that 45 days or put the, or put the, I believe it's $100, put it down. And then the first payment will be due, the first of the TED payments will be due this year.
So at the, the last quarter billing of, of the year?
We will do a separate billing for this situation because our final taxes have already been levied.
Okay, all right. Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Worship. I heard somebody from the back also speak to the fact of the interest rate. That stays constant over the 10 years?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. Yes, the municipality will go out and seek financing for this as well. So it will be a fixed term for the municipality. So therefore, we do keep, it will be the same rate that we pay, that the residents will pay over the term.
Okay. No further questions? Then again, coming back to council, we do have the recommendation before us. What are council's wishes? Moved by Counselor Wilkinson, support by the deputy mayor. Further discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion? And motion carries. Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for coming out and for expressing your opinions tonight. We'll move on to the next report of council, which is the review of compensation for the municipality. Well, we'll wait a few minutes. Sorry, the question from the audience was, who do we contact in regard to the grass situation on the properties? Mr. Sharon?
It's Alex Delbracco, who's the project manager. Alex is still here in the room. So certainly you can get your information to him on the various pieces of correspondence, including the most recent. We always reference Alex as the project manager.
So, again, question is, if, if the person signs up for a 10-year term, can they pay it down quicker, or not?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Traditionally, we have said no, although that is a project on my to-do list. There will be obviously a penalty associated, because the municipality will have to go, like I said, have to go seek the financing. So we, for us to get out of that financing, which I've tried to do on other debt that we have, it's astronomical. So there will have to be a portion of those fees. I expect that the analysis will come out that the full interest will have to be paid. So it, it's likely not beneficial for the property owner to do so, but certainly that is something that I plan on bringing forward to council. So over the course of this 10 years, it will be well taken care of, hopefully early next year.
Okay. Counselor Dunn? This is really difficult for me to be doing this, because I'm not supposed to be allowing questions just from the audience. That's, it's delegation requests. You know what I would advise Denise is, is maybe just give a call in to, and actually speak to Laura, the Director of Finance, and she'll be able to, to help you get all the answers. Okay? Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. My question is that, so what if they had lump sum to put down, and it's, they don't have the full amount, like, they put 2,000 down, and then could they set up for the rest of it to be paid through?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Right now, we require the payments to come in through installments, and that is just based on our, our policy and the way that we have done things. The analysis, analysis that I'll bring forward to council will take a look at different options for financing, just to allow that flexi, flexibility as we move forward with these projects.
It's the same difficulty we've had with the drainage out in the rural areas. There are landowners out there that are ready and willing to pay the, the full shot up front, but we've not been able to accomplish that. So, okay, we're, we're trying to change our accounting system to make that happen. So, okay, so now let us move on to the next item, which is the results of review of compensation. Ms. Roach?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. So at the council meeting held on June 11th, 2018, council authorized retaining Mary Ann Love to conduct the review of compensation for municipal council, committee of adjustment, Leamington Police Services Board, and the Union Water Supply System Joint Board of Management. The purpose of this review was to ensure that remuneration levels and allowable expenses are competitive for the next term of council. So the review also considered the impact of the legislative change to eliminate the one-third tax exemption for elected officials. So there really are two distinct issues before council this evening, that being the market analysis, and secondly, the removal of the tax benefit for the one-third tax exemption for council's wages. Although they are both, they both deal with council remuneration and were reviewed as part of the Mary Ann's engagement, the issues do need to be dealt with separately. So Mary Ann is here this evening, and at this time, I'd like to ask Mary Ann to present her findings to council. Following Mary Ann's presentation, I'll go through the rest of my report.
Thanks, Laura. Good evening. Did you want to put the presentation up on, on deck? And if it, through you, your worship, Mayor Patterson, I can go through the full presentation and then just ask for questions at the end? It's really up to council.
All right, do the full presentation, and we'll go from there.
I will. Happy to. Okay. So, as, as Laura's mentioned, I've been retained to take a look at council's remuneration.
If you could speak a little closer to the microphone, though.
Sorry. How about that? How about that? I've been retained to take a look at the elements of the remuneration for elected officials. We all, when I, and when I embark on this study, and I've done a number for municipalities in the province this year, we all want to see, you know, where we've come from. So in terms of, by way of background, the compensation, my understanding, was last reviewed back in 2012. At that time, there was a remuneration committee that was struck. The output of that review was such that the committee found that the 2011 honorariums, so the base pay and the committee stipends, were competitive as compared to other local area municipalities in the county. And they recommended that the elected official positions be adjusted on an annual basis by the same amount that's, that's provided to the management non-union salary grids. And my understanding that was approved, and those recommendations were adopted, and that brings us to today, in terms of the periodic review. This slide, along with one that, that follows just after that, just lays out the elements of compensation for the elected officials here at the municipality. We can see the amounts that are afforded to the mayor, the deputy mayor, and the counselor positions. They're listed there. We know that, as Laura has said, the incumbents in all positions have a one-third tax-free exemption. There are per diem rates that are paid for serving on an external board committee or agency. The rates are 2200, approximately 2200 for committee chair, members about $1,766 annually. And those committees are committee of adjustment, police services board, the union water supply system, joint board of management. Now, there are a number of other committees and boards that are not compensated over and above the base pay amount, and they're listed here. The elected officials have the benefit of, and participating in the health and dental benefit plans here at the municipality, with 50% of the premiums paid by incumbents. There is a kilometers reimbursement that is equivalent to the CRA rate, and there's participation in the Omer's pension plan. There's an annual conference budget of about $3,000, $3,000 annually per elected official, which excluding registration. Travels and, travel and meals are reimbursed with a cap. Per diem rates for conference attendance are $75 per day, 150, for half-day, that would be 150 for full day of attendance. There is obviously, you know, training and seminars provided. Attendance of public receptions is expensed. There's, in terms of communication devices, there are laptops and allowance of, and an internet allowance is provided to all elected officials. Cell phone is provided to the mayor and deputy mayor. And I understand the 2018 budget affords the, the ability for cell phones to be provided to all elected officials, but that just hasn't been fully actioned as yet. Now, the counselors, as the, as we were embarking on this review, participated in a survey and provided the hours, just an average of, or, an average of the hours that are required to perform the duties of elected official. Those, those amounts were reported. They range from about 40 to 60 hours a month. That's, those, those amounts were reported by counselors here at the municipality. We know that base pay is adjusted on an annual basis, as has been reflected by the activity that, the, sort of the resolution that came forward in 2011. And we, I understand there's a practice to review the external pay market every five years. So, as Laura mentioned, the elected officials here and in many parts of the province enjoy the ability of, enjoy the provision of a one-third tax-free income benefit. That will be removed by, effective January 1st, 2019, given the, the passage of the federal budget. It was in the federal budget back in 17, 2017. The objective of this exercise is primarily to focus, as Laura was mentioning, on the base pay, also the committee pay, and then reference to the one-third tax-free income In terms of the overall output of the review, I, it would appear, it appears that the, generally the 2018 base pay and the committee remuneration for the elected officials here in Leamington is competitive to the defined pay market, having regard to our comparator group, which I can get into in a bit, a bit, a bit later. And the, there is a slight adjustment required for counselors. But all in, the base pay amounts, the committee amounts, and the other elements of compensation would appear to be competitive. In my view, the comparator group is representative. We've put that comparator group based on select criteria. It resembles the comparator group that was used for the management non-union compensation program, which some of you will remember, I was here one very stormy night in January to deliver. The, and I think the rest of it stands, stands on its own. So just drilling down in terms of the market review itself, the custom, we've prepared a custom market survey using nine comparator organizations. We use those based, we select those organizations based on select criteria. We look at geographic locations, so those that are in sort of the same, similar economic areas, within the county and surrounding area, similar service alignment, et cetera. And as I said, the comparator group that we've used here aligns with the management non-union group, so there's some symmetry, I think, to that, as well as the, having aligned with the pay practice of adjustment, you know, provided to the, the elected official positions each year. The comparator group is shown in Appendix A, and I'll get to that maybe as after I walk through the presentation. And there's some indicators that are known on, are shown on that appendix, just to give a sense of size, scope, and placement. There is also an AMCTO publication, which I believe is probably available through the Clerk's Department. The AMCTO this year put together a, a report based on, that was focusing on municipal council remuneration. They published it in March of 2018, and it was a timely, timely publication, given the amount of activity in the province this year relating to remuneration reviews. In terms of the approach, staff collected the comparator compensation information. They provided it to me. I was able to then perform calculations based on the base pay and ancillary pay. I would, I didn't so much do calculations on the ancillary pay, but I was able to draw some conclusions and through, through some observations of those elements, and certainly was able to make calculations on base pay. The base pay statistics, we basically shown those in Appendix C, but the base pay comparator data is shown on B. Okay? So that, and we can get to that as, as I, as I work through the deck. The overall summary of the, of the comparison is such that the mayor is about 0.6% above the market median, so competitive. The market median is just another terminology for 50th percentile, so about midpoint, when we do all the rank orders of the observations for the mayor's role. The annual base pay ranges in this comparator group from $30,833 to $64,484. And then within the county, it's same base, so 30,000, 833, 38,280. Okay? And so we're competitive within those ranges. The deputy mayor is slightly above market median, the 50th percentile. The annual base pay ranges from $13,367 to $31,029, quite a large range. And then within the county, the range is a little bit tighter. It's $19,641 to $31,029. Counselors, however, are slightly below the market median or 50th percentile. The annual base pay ranges from $11,709 to $23,778. And then within the county, a little bit tighter scope or tighter range, $16,000 to In, in my view, I think that the market median, the 50th percentile is a reasonable target based on the comparator group. All of the organizations that were participating in the survey currently provide the one-third tax-free exemption. Two municipalities have moved forward with a decision with respect to the one-third tax, tax income benefit. And those are Innisville and St. Thomas, and they report that there's, the base salaries of their elected officials will be adjusted to offset the loss of, of that tax treatment. The remaining municipalities report that no decision has been made at this time. The practice in the sector appears to support an increase to offset the pending tax treatment. The, seven of the nine comparator organizations provide either additional flat fee payments or half, or half-day, full-day per diem rates for special meetings in addition to annual salary. And St. Thomas actually specifically prescribes that any other board or committee payment is offset by the annual stipend, and that they were the only municipality that had that exclusion. Lake Shore did not report on this element, but those of those that reported, the per diem rates range from about $60 per meeting for half-day to about $200 meeting for a full day. Three of the local comparators, so Kingsville, LaSalle, and Lake Shore, reported annual per diems for board and committee participation, those that are paid for, ranging from $1,500 to $29, about $2,900 annually. And our range goes from about $1,700 to, I think it is about $2,200. I think that's it. So we're within that range. And that is dependent upon whether it's a committee member or chair. And these meetings are union water, police services board, and committee of adjustment. Two of our local comparators, Amherstburg and Essex, report meeting per diems ranging from $75 to $175, so that's per meeting. Tacomse reported a monthly per diem for the police services board. And also notable is that Kingsville and LaSalle reported a number of additional paid committees that some of the, or other peer municipalities in the county do not pay for. One comparator reported an additional per diem, $75 for meetings and receptions outside the county. Five comparators report that registration for public receptions is, are reimbursed, and one of them also reports that there's, there's a reimbursement for spouse and companion support. Six, nine comparators reported additional per diem for attendance at conferences, again, $80 to about $200 with meals expensed. Meal allowances ranged from 50 to 65, maxing up to, in terms of what was reported, about $75 per day for three meals, and again with accompanying receipts. In terms of travel, seven of nine reported kilometers reimbursement, and most stated that their kilometers reimbursement is aligning with either CRA or the town, city-approved rates. There's only one municipality that provides a taxable car allowance, that's $5,000 for the mayor and $1,000 for counselor. In terms of communication devices, all eight compare, eight comparators, so eight of the nine reported that laptops and iPads are provided. Five comparators provide cell phones, and three of the comparators provide reimbursement for internet. None, notably, none of the comparators reported on any of their time commitments. So we only had, I had nothing to really compare to within the group. The common practice in the sectors to review council remuneration once during the term of council, and typically, the revised base pay rates are implemented during the next term of council. And council base pay is typically determined using customized survey. Some organizations will try to source a committee of, a community, a community committee as well. The typical target is 50th percentile, and practice is supported, this practice is supported by the, the report that's been published by AMCTO this year. It's also common practice to adjust the annual base pay of the elected official salaries or base, by, by the amount that has been, that is provided to management non-union group. And, and you can see here, just in terms of reflection, the practice of doing that since at least 2011, and you may have done that previous, I'm not sure, here at the municipality, but it has kept the base pay portion, the largest portion of the remuneration for elected officials, in, in, in a pretty competitive state, subject to a small adjustment required for counselors. So it's a good practice, it would appear. Just in terms of, while we didn't have a lot reported on time spent, I did note that in the AMCTO report, AMCTO report, that fewer than 5% of the municipalities in the province that have a population below 50,000 report having a full-time mayor. So I just put that in for your reference. In terms of conclusions, as I said, I think that the, in my view, the stipends for the mayor, deputy mayor positions are competitive to the 50th percentile. And with regards to the counselor, it's slightly low to the 50th percentile. To bring that up to the 50th percentile would require an adjustment of 1.6% based on today's, today's base pay amounts. I think the council is generally competitive with regards to the other elements of remuneration other than cell phones, but I understand that is in budget. And as I said, I think the comparative group at 50, the 50th percentile target is reasonable. So the recommendations here, and I, I think, I was reading the staff report. I think the staff report was recommending effective December of this year that those payments be made, and that seems reasonable to me. So I would be more than willing to modify my own recommendation, so to align with the staff report, so effective December 2018, that council confirmed the honorarium amounts. amounts is generally competitive to the 50th percentile, with the small adjustment required to the counselor position. The amounts noted here, likewise in the staff report. Provision of cellphone to the elected officials is budgeted, and of course, the implementation costs in reference to the 1/3 calculation, 1/3 tax-free calculations are set out in the staff report. The appendices, which you have in your package, just basically give us a sense of what the market comparators look like. So we basically have in this group the other local area municipalities in the county, and a few external, which would be St. Thomas, Stratford, and Innisville. The comparator-based pay is shown on, the market comparator-based pay for elected officials is shown on Appendix B, and you can see that here. And there is no deputy mayor for St. Thomas, and therefore you see a blank there. Other than that, all amounts are shown. And then the calculation is shown here, and I would suggest here, I could go to the market median amounts, which is the target shown on this, on the slide, and you can see the number of observations that have been made. The percentage differential column just shows that the amount by which, for example, just focusing on counselor, the 2018 base pay would need to be adjusted to meet that market target that is shown in the column beside it. And that is basically the presentation. I'd be more than happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. This is always one of the most comfortable topics we get to discuss at council. I guess my first question is this. Forever being on council as long as I have been, I've always understood that the 1/3 tax-free portion of this was simply to, you know, more or less cover the costs of all the things we do locally. So the mileage that we never submit for, for the time away from either work or family or whatever to go to committee meetings that aren't paid committees, and we all sit on a number of those. You know, just those expenses that are really more out of pocket than anything. That's what that 1/3 tax-free was always in my mind about. So would it not be logical, and if I'm wrong, that's fine, but wouldn't it be logical then, since they're taking that 1/3 tax-free away, and just leave our salaries where they are, and then just have each of us bill, I know Laura's gonna freak when I say this, but just hand in mileage reports for all the local traveling that we do, and we do a lot of it, and bill for our meeting time, based on whatever rate we came up with? Would that not be a more equitable, transparent way of doing things, other than just bumping up our pay rates so that we end up with the same amount of pay?
Did you want to tell me to comment on that?
Well, I think probably Laura can walk through this as well, but I think what I'm challenged with is I don't really understand, I understand the entitlements, but I don't understand the practice. So for example, there's already an entitlement for kilometers reimbursement, and there's already an entitlement for payment for committees. Now, in terms of the practice, Laura can probably speak to that much better than I.
But there, the only time you get to bill for mileage is when you're out of town.
Right.
And the only time you get paid on a committee is if you're on the police board, Union Water, Committee of Adjustment. So there's, and all the other committees that we do.
In terms of, and I appreciate that, Your Worship, I think the origin, like the intent of the, my view anyway, and I've been around a long time, but maybe not back to the days when it first came out, not that long. But I think the intent for the, with regards to the 1/3 tax-free was just that. It was to reimburse for expenses that would be regularly incurred. But I think what's happened, at least in my 30 years, a few plus, in the sector, is that there has been other elements of reimbursement that organizations have, that other, that municipalities have brought into their compensation envelope. So it's, I think maybe the intent was, as it was at one time, and practice has evolved. And I think what some of, I really can't speak for other municipalities, although I've been to a few of these over the last year, I think that many municipalities are struggling with the attraction to the seat, and to the elected official seat, and to have the, at this, the thinking with other councils, if there's a 1/3, that 1/3 tax-free amount is not reconciled, then that does impact the base pay considerably. So that is the thinking, and I understand there's a history. I really just don't know what your practice is, and Laura, you can probably speak to that much better than me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our current policy states that elected officials and employee who use their own vehicle on approved municipal business are entitled to a mileage reimbursement. So that would be tax-free. We would have to follow our same procedures as what we do with all of our other reimbursement, of course, providing specific travel to, from where, and what the meeting was in regard to. So that is an option for council. The 1/3 tax exemption is, as Marianne said, the removal of that was led by the federal government in that passing in 2017. And AMO and other municipal organizations have been lobbying the government to reconsider this, because certainly AMO recognized very early on, and as I reported back to council last year, there will be a tax impact to our ratepayers by virtue of this legislation. So at the end of the day, I guess, and that's what's outlined in Schedule I, is that by virtue of this exemption no longer being permitted, council salaries will be reduced by approximately 11%. And that's your take, that's the take-home pay for the next council, and I want to reiterate that, that was the purpose of this review, was to really look at remuneration for the next council for 2018 through 2022. Because this council still has the privilege of that 1/3 tax exemption to the end of the count, or sorry, till the end of the term of your council, based on the bylaw that was approved in 2015. So you're really looking forward to the next council and what the impact it will have on them.
Questions from council? Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Your Worship. Laura, that 11%, that's based on the amount that's calculated of the $19,000 or whatever. Now, that doesn't base it when it comes to, because each one of us, our personal situation is different, as we were discussing with me working full-time and Tim as well. So that may factor in a little differently, would it not?
Me too.
Well, yeah. I won't pick comments.
You could say work, yeah. But I've seen Bill at work, so.
Oh, wow, I know, this is the hardest working, that's all I got, I know, I got. But anyway, it actually will vary then, depending on each person's situation, would it not? Or are you just basing it because of 19?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You're absolutely right, Counselor Dunn. The analysis on Schedule I really just looked at the remuneration from the municipality to council, simply because each situation will be very unique, and depending on your, and I'm not a income tax, personal income tax expert by any means, but I do know that depending on your income levels, you have different tax rates. So I've based it on the most simplistic situation, removed all the scenarios that we currently have, because that's the most appropriate thing to do, in my opinion, and just looked at it very generically to say, you know, if you are on council and you earn $19,000, here's what your net pay would be.
Are there questions? Counselor Wilkinson?
I feel like I have a comment, I guess, and maybe I'll be looking for a little bit of direction afterwards, just to make sure I understand our options here. Just my comments on this are, I don't want to see this council or the next council lose any ground. We're not, I'm not looking for a pay increase, let's say. But with the elimination of the 1/3 portion, basically that's a drop in the amount we allot for, for salary of this job. So saying that, that is what I wish to happen, is that we don't lose any ground here tonight. And I think we have options on here that make that happen. And if I understand them right, it would be Option A in A. Am I correct with that, with that guess on page three of your, our report? Is it page four?
Option A levels it, levels the pay as it is. That's the way I read it as well, yeah.
And from this counselor, that's my thought, you know, is that I just don't want to lose any ground. I'm not looking for an increase, let's say. I don't want to lose any ground, though. And by doing Option A for the market analysis review, along with, where it says removal of 1/3 tax exemption, there's Option A there, I think we have to do both correctly in order to stay where we're at and not lose any ground when it comes to pay. Am I correct?
Laura?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Counselor Wilkinson, that is, that is correct. It is council's choice, though. Certainly, you can pick either option, or you can pick something that's not on this report. Administration is really just looking for your direction as to how you would see remuneration for the next, for next council. But if you wanted to stay status quo, so your same net pay, again, they're two discrete issues, but based on Marianne's market analysis, it would be Option A to do the 1.6% increase to counselor's salary exclusively. The mayor position and deputy mayor position would remain the same. And then secondly, with the removal of the 1/3 tax exemption, that would be Option A to keep your same net pay the same.
And just a little further with that, that could get misinterpreted as being that we are, I guess technically it is a, it is a salary increase, but I just hope that it's reported and, you know, not interpreted in a negative way, that people need to be reminded of why that is happening. It's because of a rule from the federal government, newly introduced rule here that makes things different. And we aren't gaining our, like Laura said, we be staying at status quo. And I'm going to trust the recommendations that our finance people have made for the options to make that happen. So if that's Option A in A, then that's where I stand, at least. That's my thoughts on this.
So I have Counselor Verbeke up next.
Brother Mayor, thanks. I have to kind of agree with Counselor Wilkinson, because, and I'm glad we're doing this now for the next council, because first term of council for me, 2010, January 2011, we had to give ourselves a pay increase. And I remember the big blow up there got turned down, or people got confused in what they were voting about, so we didn't get a pay increase. But then you do get behind, but it's going to hurt some people, you know, with different 48 or 52%. It's going to hurt. So I look forward to more debate, but it's just one thing, you know, you're going here now asking for a pay increase when you just, this should have been at the end of the meeting instead right after Danforth, but I don't know, who does the, who does the agenda, but that was, you got to think of that ahead next time. So I'm open to anything.
Counselor Hammond?
Your Worship, thank you. Like yourself, I thought that the 1/3 was somewhat to offset, in fact, I think I've asked that question when I first come on, to offset, you know, I sit on seven other committees that I don't get paid for, and mileage or anything else. So, and I thought that that's, that's the way it was done. I also agree with Counselor Verbeke, that I think it's something this council needs to make a decision on, as opposed to a new council coming in and having them, the newly elected council saying, oh yeah, the first thing they did was give themselves a wage increase. And I too don't want to go behind, and don't think the new council should go behind as well. I think it affects every one of us in a different way, depending on our gross income. And we might have to rely on your expertise to tell us how that affects us, but, but I guess to my point, even if this is passed this evening, during budget deliberations, is there not still room to talk about that budgeting for car allowance, for example, to go to some of those meetings? Can that be done back then, too? Or if, once this is either passed or rejected tonight, is it a done deal for the next four years?
I don't know. Laura?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. I'm not sure if I completely understand your question, Counselor Hammond, but if you're asking whether or not we can look at remuneration for other committees and reimbursement for mileage during budget deliberations, absolutely. This is just meant to confirm the remuneration for the honorarium that council is being paid in 2018. And if I can just clarify something, I don't want to mislead council. When I was talking with Counselor Wilkinson about status quo, Option A of the market analysis does bring the counselor's salary to 50%. So that's going to cost the municipality $1,600 per year. And then we would do the 1/3 tax exemption that would keep it status quo. So I just want to make sure that you were clear on that.
Yes, Laura, that was my question, and thank you, because that's, you know, this has nothing to do with what we can do during budget deliberations with respect to payment for other committees and mileage, and that's where I was coming from. Thank you.
Counselor, pardon me, Deputy Mayor?
Okay, I was confused on that, Laura. So, okay, so Option A gives the council members So Option A of the market analysis gives the council members the increase to be up to the regular 50th percentile. And then the other Option A increases the honorarium. So Option A is not the status quo, it's an increase two times. And then B leaves us as normal as that status quo, B, Option B. And then we don't have the increase to cover Well, for myself, being in that position at the moment that is above the 50th percentile, I don't really feel like I can be a person to speak against the bringing up of the council remuneration. Oh, some of those words I have trouble with, Vs and Ws and remuneration. But let's remember what we did with staff, right? That's, we have to keep that in mind, because we were presented with bringing staff members up to where Marianne said they should be, and we all decided that was not our option. That's all I want to say. I'm really in an uncomfortable spot for me, because I feel like I would be going against my remuneration for my fellow counselors, but it really weighs with me that we turned the others down. So we have to practice what we preach to a degree. We have to practice what we preach the whole way, not just to a part of the way. So I just want to put that out there. I'm really, this causes me some stress.
I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to go back and ask a question out here. So again, taking into the conversation here, when I look at the remuneration for council, it's reflecting $19,396, which is the proposed increased amount. Correct?
$19,396 is the current.
Is the current?
Is the current remuneration of council.
Okay.
So that would be an additional $320 per counselor to add the 1.6.
So ultimately, when I look at the numbers here, if we go with Option B, in other words, just stay where we are, the town pays about $18,000 a year less than they are right now.
That's actually council's reduction in income.
Correct.
The only, there is actually an increased portion to the municipality with this legislation by virtue of us taking HST recovery on the 1/3 exemption. So if you do nothing, it's still costing municipality $6,000.
Okay, but council goes backwards by $18,000. And if we top it up, what is the overall cost then to the municipalities? Is it $27,156, or is it more than that?
The overall cost to the municipality is $45,778 approximately.
And Your Mayor, I just need to correct myself. It's actually, my intentions as one, when I was trying to explain, Ms. Percy helped me out, thank you very much. It's actually Option B followed by Option A would be what I was trying to explain to you, what I'm trying to get to here. So Option B followed by Option A below that. Just wanted to correct myself, make sure. wanted to correct myself, make sure that.
Understood. Thank you. Deputy, no, I did deputy mayor already, right? Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. I, I seem to, I agree with the deputy mayor. I just want to see the next council brought up to the same, status quo. I don't, I don't see the 1.6 increase. I'm, I'm good with just bringing it to status quo. We did that to staff. So I feel that that's what we should do with us as well. And if that's option B, is just bringing it up, so that, that's what I'd be supporting.
I must be seeing the numbers wrong. I thought option A brings it all up level.
Option A, for the market, like I said, they're two distinct issues. That's why this gets confusing. The market analysis, option A, gives the counselors a 1.6% increase. Option B keeps everybody at their current rate.
Oh, okay, all right. Can I, can I try?
Yes, go ahead.
Sure. So I think it, it might be helpful to break it into two parts. First, the market analysis suggests that this council, council members, not the mayor and deputy mayor, but council members are underpaid in comparison to the comparators by 1.6%. So first decision, does the, do the council members want to see a 1.6% increase in the base pay of the counselors? If, if, that would be applying the market review. Then, the next question is, what do you do about the one-third reduction? And I think option B is, sorry, the second option A is to say, just increase the base pay equivalent to what you would lose by losing the ability to, to take advantage of the one-third. So do you want the 1.6% increase so that you're equal to the other comparators? Yes or no? Second, do you increase by the amount that you would otherwise lose? I think if you do it in two steps, it might be easier.
Easier, okay. So I have no problem supporting council members having the 1.6% increase, because I know the amount of work that they put in. And they're deserving of, of that amount, just to get to the 50th percentile. But that's, that's my opinion. So it's open to council to discuss. Deputy Mayor.
Further to that, you, you were, you agreed with giving staff the increase, and we didn't. So, so that puts a little more onus on us. And I'm not being disrespectful to you. I'm just saying.
No, I understood where you're coming from.
We're the one, okay, because we, we didn't agree with that point. So, so, so we need, we need to own that one, or.
Wide open discussion.
Yes, okay. But I, I just wanted to say, take some onus off you for that, because you were a proponent of the other, vocal proponent, and that was good. But now we.
And I still am when it comes to the council members, so.
Yes. And, but that's fine. But for us, it's.
Okay. Counselor Hammond.
It reflects on us. That's all I'm.
Your worship, thank you. And a question for Marianne, if I can. When we, as a group, denied the, the wage increases to the members of the staff here, were they not at the 50th percentile already and above? Or were they, were there some that were below?
My recollection through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselors, that there were some, some positions that were below.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Am I right with that, Ruth?
Yeah, yeah. The two, well, you're going to have to make a motion, because, okay. So Counselor Wilkinson.
Thank you, your worship. I'll make a motion then. Council supports market analysis review, option B, and the removal of the one-third tax exemption, option A.
Okay. So 1.6% increase to the council members? No?
No, that'd be option A.
Okay.
Mine was option, market analysis review, option B.
B, so leave everybody where they are.
And below that, removal of one-third tax exemption, option A.
And that results in the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the chart rather than the report. So that's why I'm getting confused. So you end up, everybody's retaining the same pay they get right now?
Yes.
Okay. So moved and seconded. Counselor Verbeke.
Through the mayor, there should be something out there that every person who lives in this town should at least run four years. Because it's, that, it's not all, you know, sexy and glory up here, if I can use the deputy mayor's, because it's, it is tough. So I just, everybody should at least run once.
Well, they can run, but they need to get elected. Yeah, yeah. I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. Okay. So what are council's feelings? We had a motion on the floor. So in other words, stay the same, ultimately. All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Dunn. Thank you, Marianne. Okay. Next report is one regarding the community improvement plan funding. Mr. Cox.
Thank you, your worship. Pardon me. Thank you, your worship, and members of council. The purpose of my report tonight is to seek council's approval to reallocate $17,500 in budgeted community improvement plan grant funding from the interior renovation grant stream of the CIP to the building and exterior, building exterior and facade improvement grant stream also of the CIP. As council knows, the municipality maintains a CIP for Uptown Leamington, which allows the municipality to provide grants to businesses and property owners in the downtown area who are redeveloping, beautifying, or otherwise improving their properties. In 2018, council budgeted $75,000 for CIP grants, which was split between $50,000 for exterior improvements and $25,000 for interior improvements. As outlined in my report, interest in the 2018 intake of the CIP has been quite high, with, we have received applications accounting for just over $63,000 of the available $75,000 in the first half of the year alone. However, also, as I noted in that breakdown, we have received applications for the building exterior program, which are over the allocation of $50,000 that was originally budgeted. While we, the applications that we've received for the interior stream have been well below the budgeted amount. We've also received several further inquiries about potential additional facade projects that we haven't received applications for yet. But I've not seen a comparable interest in other interior improvements amongst the people that I've spoken to about the program. Traditionally, the building, there's been much more uptake on the building exterior and facade improvement program. And I think looking at the results that we've seen since the CIP was brought in, in 2012, that the exterior improvement program has achieved probably the most noticeable results in terms of beautifying and improving the uptown area. So in light of all this, we're requesting that some of the money that was originally allocated to the interior grant program be reallocated to the exterior grant program to allow us to meet the current demand. And the overall budgeted amount for CIP grants in 2018 remains unchanged as a result of this. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thanks very much. Questions for council? Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. James, to the report, I mean, I certainly don't see any problem in moving that money, as you suggested. One thing in reading through the report that I, I would like to see changed, if the rest of my council members agree, applications now are required to only have one quote for any, any expenditures. And I think there should be a minimum of two quotes, if not three, for every, everything that, pardon? Anyway, I think that there should be a minimum of two quotes for every item that's, that's requested.
Mr. Newfeld?
Counselor Hammond, I understand why you're raising that. But I believe that this issue was raised previously, and there was so much difficulty finding two or three quotes, even to get the work done, that it became prohibitive. And so I, I think that's why we started accepting one quote, just so that we could get people involved in the program.
Okay. Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. James, I approve of this. I, I think it's a great idea, because we're getting more people involved in their facade. Going forward, I still want to see that interior option there, but I think we should always have it, so that wherever the uptake is, that we'll be gladly willing to move it to get the investment in our downtown or uptown area.
Yes. And as I noted in my report, we are in the process of designing a new CIP program to launch in 2019. And there'll be a report coming to council likely next month that confirms the initial directions that we've explored and seeks council's direction on how they'd like to see the new program rolled out.
Counselor Verbeke.
Through the mayor, thanks through you. James, does this new program include areas other than the VIA area?
That would be one of the questions that we would seek council direction on.
No, but if you're bringing a new, sorry, if you're bringing a new thing forward to us to possibly vote on, I hope the uptown merchants, other that's not in the VIA, or and/or the rural stores and facades that are out there that need facing, could be included in this, so we don't have to wait maybe another year.
So the process to implement a community improvement plan is, is regulated under various provincial statutes. And there is a requirement to have supportive policies in our official plan to expand outs, to offer a CIP in a particular area. So there's a public process that will have to be worked through as we launch the new plan. So there'll be lots of opportunity for input of council and, and the public to, through that process.
Okay. Let Mr. Newfeld add to that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, it is our intention to try to expand the scope, so that more people, more businesses are able to use it, utilize the CIP. It, it's difficult when, you know, somebody tries to access the funds, and we're, are told, well, you're on the wrong side of the street, right? The CIP can also be used in specific areas, specific districts. So it's our intention to look at that as we're looking at our official plan review and incorporate as much as, as we can. We won't forget.
Okay. So there's a recommendation, oh, Counselor Dunn, moving the recommendation? Support by anyone? Counselor Wilkinson? Discussion on the motion? All in favor? And carried. Thank you, sir. Next report up is one regarding the subdivision acceptance of MZM Development. Allen. Mr. Botham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. MZM Development Phases 1 and 2 is located west of County Road 33 and north of Secliff Drive. And you can see that in Figure 1 that's included in the report. Phase 1 of the development included an extension of Peter Street and a portion of Olive Drive. In addition to Phase 1 work, the developer installed water and sewer infrastructure in Phase 2, and that's just the underground work. So outstanding works in Phase 1 would include concrete sidewalk and surface asphalt. And the sidewalk, according to the development agreement, would be constructed within 12 months of the date of construction of the curbing and the asphalt pavement. In this case, it's important to note that the asphalt pavement went down in December last year, and we would likely not require that the contractor construct sidewalk in December this year, and it would likely get pushed into the spring. And then, for council's information, the securities for MZM held to date, or for the construction of the work was $628,000. And that represented 50% of the cost of the entire development, both Phases 1 and 2. So securities may now be reduced to an amount that equals 25% of the value of the completed works, and we'd hold that for the duration of the maintenance period. And we'd also hold 100% of the value of incomplete works in Phase 1, or the surface asphalt and the sidewalk. And we'd also continue to hold 50% of the value of works that are outstanding in Phase 2. So we are recommending that council hereby accept municipal services installed in the MZM development, save and accept sidewalks and surface asphalt in Phase 1, and that council hereby accept underground services, water and sewers only, installed in Phase 2. And that the required one-year maintenance period of the accepted services in Phases 1 and 2 begin July 23, 2018.
Okay, thanks, Allen. Counselor Verbeke?
Through the mayor, thanks. Allen, it's probably the same question we had, and we debated a long time on Secliff Heights. I know they wanted to put the sidewalks in right away on Cherry Lane, and we kind of off and off. And I can see now, they, they got the curbs cut, everything's going to go good. The construction, they're still constructing this subdivision. Why would they need to put sidewalks in yet so early? Why can't you wait till it's three quarters done, or completed like other places? Why, why? I guess that's all.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The sidewalk construction debate is, is an old debate, and we've debated whether or not we should put them in early, put them in late, what kind of damage gets done during construction. Our recommendation is that we move ahead with the construction of the sidewalk as the development agreements are completed. So Phase 1 is complete, the sidewalk should go in, because we're not sure when Phase 2 would go ahead, and we'll have residents in the area soon. Bill, you'll see houses going up there, so we'd like to get the sidewalks in, so the residents can start using the sidewalk.
Through the mayor, back. So, Allen, if Phase 1 isn't completed for another year and a half, two years, but yet you're saying July, it starts, so they have to be, have the sidewalks in by July of 19? Or am I reading that wrong?
It was intended through the agreement that sidewalks would be completed within 12 months of completion of the surface asphalt. But in this case, the surface asphalt went down in December, and it's not ideal to construct a sidewalk in December. That's all.
No, I agree. But now, it's still, if it doesn't get developed for, it's still a year from that July? Or are we going to go a year from when it gets close to completion? Like, if it doesn't get completed now, so let's say there's six more, six houses there, and that's it, something happens to the economy. So there's only six houses. So now you're going to say, since the year's up, you still have to put the sidewalks in?
Yes, that's how we would move forward. We don't tie it to percent of houses that are complete. We tie it, in this case, to a date.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allen, sorry, there used to be a, kind of a, bit of a drainage problem down on the north end of Phase 1. Do you recall that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I did have discussions about drainage concerns at the northwest corner of Phase 1, yes.
Have they been rectified?
As I understand it, we have visited the site. We've reviewed the, the infrastructure that we required, that the contractor installed in Phase 1. And that infrastructure should manage all of the surface water in the area. And we're also looking at the infrastructure that was installed as part of previous development on Benny and Antonio Court to the north, just to make sure that's still functioning.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, what are councils, moved by Counselor Hammond, support by Deputy Mayor? Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Motion carries. Last report is the roads for the Hogs for Hospice event. Mr. Sharon, you and I have had discussions, so.
Yes, yes. Through you, Mayor Patterson, a very brief report to inform council that, given the construction schedule, we will have Erie Street South opened between Secliff Drive and Robson Road for the Hogs for Hospice weekend. A large section of that, the majority of it, will be still in a gravel state, although we will allow vehicles to access that. And we think that's important to let council know. Traffic should move better over that very busy weekend. And we have met and discussed the motorcycle route with the event organizers. And although it's not ideal, because we have construction projects going along the road in two different locations, both on Erie South and on Pele Drive, we have come up with, with a compromise, an alternative route that goes around the detours. And we're going to make sure that the, the conditions of the road throughout that entire stretcher are in good condition for the motorcycle rally. So just an update report for council.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Newfeld, then.
Just further to that, one of the reasons we wanted to get that Erie Street South road open for that weekend is to try and alleviate the congestion that we see on Secliff between Cherry Lane and Erie Street. is to try and alleviate the congestion that we see on Seacliff between Cherry Lane and Erie Street. But, we have the stop signs up. They will remain up during the weekend because we can't, we can't be taking them down and then putting them back up after the weekend. We finally have people getting used to the fact that we have stop signs there. We don't want to eliminate that for the weekend, however. The compromise is to open up Erie Street South between Seacliff and Robson, and as Mr. Sharon has said, will remain in a gravel state, except where the motorcycle rally route will be, where we have guaranteed the organizers of this event that there will be hard path between Park and Robson so that the motorcycles won't get damaged from the gravel, and that was their main concern. But, we want to open it up so that we can try and help alleviate what we can see is going to be very congested on Seacliff between Erie Street and Cherry Lane.
Questions from council? Oh, Counselor Vraviki, I'm sorry. Wait, I had Counselor Dunn first. I'm sorry, go back to my notes here. Counselor Dunn first, and then Counselor Vraviki.
It's okay, through you, your worship, but I was just asking, I was going to, in question about the hard surface for the bikes, and Peter addressed that, so thank you.
Okay, Counselor Vraviki.
Guess that was kind of along my question too, but is Erie Street South going to be opened up for everybody?
Yes, Erie Street South will be open for all vehicular traffic. We won't be seeing the motorcycles go down there because they won't want to go on where the gravel is. But, yes, it will be open for all vehicular traffic for that weekend only.
And I don't think, probably just a motion to receive on that, Brenda?
Yes.
Okay. Motion received by the Deputy Mayor and Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, and carried. There were no matters for approval submitted, other matters for consideration, and we do have a report on closed session.
A closed meeting was held at 5:30 PM prior to the open session of council pursuant to subsection 239-2C of the Municipal Act for the purpose of considering one item. Confidential Report, LLS 4718 dated July 19, 2018, regarding waterfront lands, action to assert right of passage. Council provided direction to administration with regard to the matter. Proper notice of the meeting was given, and the meeting adjourned at 5:50 PM.
Consideration of bylaws then, please.
Bylaw 46-18 being a bylaw to impose fees in connection with the Danforth Avenue Sewer Separation Project. That was with Report, LLS 4218. Bylaw 48-18 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held July 23, 2018.
Moved by Counselor Vraviki, support by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, motion carries. There were no notices of motion circulated, but there is open session, and I'm going to start this one off this time because it's been an ongoing conversation I've had with Mr. Sharon, not just on the road for Erie Street South, but I was asking for council's update on how the Peely Drive work is going along, how things are going along on Oak Street East in front of the school area. And then, I raised some concerns about Road 11 and Road 10 and their conditions, and what the long-term plans are on both of those, so, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I guess I'll begin on the Peely Bevel project. As council's aware, we're in our fourth and final phase of this particular project. Thus far this year, we have our main line sewer complete between Ellis and Road 10. We're currently working on the last section between Road 12 to Road D, and that's the main line sewers. Detours are in place for the area, and those detours continue to move depending on where the construction is happening. Construction is scheduled to be substantially performed by September 21, 2018. So, essentially, by the end of September, again, we expect to be substantially performed, doesn't mean the project is finished. And I think the biggest part of that discussion will be the base course of asphalt. So, the course, we'll have a course down, and we'll look to put the base course on likely sometime in 2019, but the majority of the sewer works will be complete by the end of September. The Oakwagle intersection, if council's been by there recently, they'll see that curbs have been poured. We expect a base course of asphalt by the end of this month. The signal work has begun, and we're basically on schedule to have that project completed by the first or second week of August. Certainly, we want to have it open for when school begins, and we don't want to push it too close to that deadline. So, first or second week, we should be finished there. The Erie South project, it is progressing well. The contractor's on schedule. The sanitary sewer from Conover to Gold Coast has been completed. The storm sewer from Conover to Robson Road is complete. We're going to continue over the next two weeks to work on the main line sewer from Conover North up to Seacliff. That should be completed over the next couple of weeks. Again, the road will be open for Hogs for Hospice, and that particular project is on schedule to be completed by the end of November. Before I touch on the Road 10 and Road 11, I also thought I would provide council with a brief update on our County Road 20 multi-use paths that we're constructing in cooperation and partnership with the county. The tender for that particular project recently closed, and we are on budget for that particular project, so that's a good thing. We're beginning at the end of this month. I think the start date is July 30, though that could change by a few days. And we do anticipate being completed, that project, by the end of the year. So, the Road 10 and Road 11 issue that the mayor is referring to, in some select locations along Road 10 and Road 11, residents and council will likely, if you've been down there, notice some damage to the road. The damage to the road is being caused by heavy trucks and heavy equipment for greenhouse construction and greenhouse operations. And so, you know, we have a couple of issues to deal with. First and foremost, in the short term, is to look at the road that's been damaged. Essentially, these are tar and chip roads, originally built as gravel roads, B-gravel roads, and we've come in over the years and put tar and chip on top of them, sometimes with additional base, sometimes not. And the roads are essentially, in certain locations, are breaking up. Road 10 in particular, because of the construction of a particular greenhouse site, and then Road 11 because of greenhouse traffic. There are two indicators to a larger issue that I think we're going to have to deal with, and that is the fact that our rural roads, particularly around our, the corridor, the Highway 77 corridor, they weren't designed to deal with this level of industrial-style traffic, large trucks, heavy trucks, in and out. And so, this has created an issue now that we're going to have to look at and address as the sector grows. It's a very positive thing, but it does create issues for us. Likely what we anticipate, Alan and I have had a couple of discussions on it even prior to, you know, the mayor's request, and we'll likely look to implement a formal review of that particular matter in 2019. So, likely in our engineering budget, you'll note a request for funds to study that particular area. The idea essentially would be, you know, given our existing greenhouse development, giving predicted, taking into consideration predicted growth, taking into consideration the number of vehicles that come in and out of these operations and the type of vehicles, you know, what should a typical road design look like throughout this greenhouse corridor, throughout this sector? I can assure council that once the professionals look at it and take a look at the traffic and the volumes and the weight of these vehicles, they won't recommend a design of an old B-gravel road with tar and chip asphalt on top of it. You know, what that would exactly look like with regards to both the profile and the design is yet to be determined, but we do know that, well, we would anticipate that it would recommend some upgrades to that. And then, certainly, the matters before council would be, you know, who and how. How do those upgrades happen, and who pays for those upgrades, and how do we approach that particular, particular problem? And so, that's what we've talked about doing. Short term, you know, we've, we're going to hire somebody to come and repair those sections of road, take out the bad sections and repair it. We'll have some conversations with the developers to see what we can do on the financial side. But first and foremost, we need to make the road safe longer term. We need to understand what should those roads look like, given the expected demand.
Well, that's good news, Mr. Sharon. Thank you very much. Because when I've been out there and having these discussions with my friends and my clients that use those roads or live on those roads, we were just surmising this was a new traffic calming measure that the town was doing with the pylons, and they're always a lot of fun at nighttime when you really can't say, no. But it's good to hear that, you know, it's being looked after because they have been rather beaten up, so, good news. And I'm really happy to hear about the other, other ones. Like, I go past the Oakwagle one fairly frequently, and I thought it was moving along rather quickly, so that's, that's good news there. Peely's always good to hear, and as mid, mid, out into September, be usable, yeah. That'd be very, very good. Excellent, so, I don't know, Counselor Vraviki?
Alfred, I want to say something. I'll talk to you later about Road 10 and 11. I just want to thank the town, the staff, Parks and that for our plaque unveiling at Mercia Park. It was done fairly quick, and I told them now I'm expecting things to go that quick for everything else we do. It's beautiful. I'd like to thank Deputy Mayor for showing up, and probably more so, Counselor Hammond and his wife for showing up early. The park was a disgrace, garbage all over the place, because, I don't know if Counselor Hammond has brought this to anybody's attention, but then the cans were still full all day, and there was a staff came down there, and he got emailed to come down there, and he says, well, it's not the route of the garbage truck now. I think if there's something going on there, this should be the first stop in the morning, is cleaning out Seacliff Park because, or putting up more receptacles, because there was only two underneath the pavilion, and they were chuck full, and it was out there. But, a great job, I mean, that's not the staff, town staff problem, but they should get out there, maybe. But, just great job for all that. And I'm sure somebody's going to mention the Mexican Symphony that was here, but some of us had to go to another meeting, and it was at the marijuana and the workplace at the art gallery. Now, nobody knows what to do yet, so Officer Stu was there and Janine, and a great presentation. A lot of people don't know what's going to happen with smoking in your rooms and businesses around the property, and you cannot voluntarily ask for a drug test. There's so much going on that nobody knows what's going to happen yet. So, we're just warned that if you go to the states, they have zero tolerance, so even if something happened in the 60s and 70s, do you lie or not? I don't know. But it's just, it's another upcoming thing. October the 18th really going to be interesting everywhere. So, thanks, and thanks again to the town staff for pulling that together, and it was well attended.
So, just a correction, you said Seacliff Park, which you meant Mercia Park. Yep, no worries, no worries. I just wanted to make sure that that's recorded, yep. Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. Rob, I have a question regarding the sewer that, the combined sewers that we have running down Erie Street South and how they, they go out into the, underneath the dock. At one time, I was told there was a sign for the outlet by the dock down there, and the sign was removed. I'm wondering, when we separate the sewers, are we still going to have an outlet down there for the stormwater? And are we going to put a sign back up for that, if we do?
Your worship, the answer, Counselor, is yes. When we're finished that sewer separation, there still will be a stormwater outlet that's located along the west side of the dock, quite a few meters, you know, from the shoreline. The good news is that that sewer, after the sewer separation project, will only ever have stormwater coming out of it, and will never have combined sewage coming out of it. With regards to the sign, you know, I can talk with Alan. I know that we did some work on the, on the diffusers. So, there's diffusers on the end of that pipe. Obviously, you just can't have an open pipe or else it'll fill up quickly with sand and other debris and plug it up. I don't know if we explored the idea of a sign at that time, but we can look at it. If we feel that it creates a hazard, given its location and given its depth, then we could put a sign on it, Counselor.
Any further? It's just that, apparently, in years past, there was a big rush, and some kids got hurt because of the flood after a storm or the water running down there. So, just having a sign warning of the water going out to protect everybody involved saves us as well. Thank you.
Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. I have a couple of things. Just to talk a little bit about Mercia Park. I was concerned, people did make an effort to clean up their garbage, except they piled it underneath one of the trees. But more importantly, and I had mentioned this to Rob, was that, you know, we supply these barbecues down there for people to barbecue, but I think we need some kind of container, a metal or a metal receptacle of some kind, and instructions about what to do with the coals. Because this group of people took their coals, and at least they didn't put them in the garbage under the tree. They put them out in the grass in the middle of the park. Now, that isn't a good thing either. If you've got young people coming in and going to, you know, this is, this is Sunday morning. So, if you've got young kids, and that, those diamonds get used all the time, God forbid, one of them should run out there and step on those coals. So, we need to do something about that, whether, as I said, be a metal container or something, and instructions about what to do with it. Enough about that. The other thing, and I also mentioned this to Rob, some months back, I brought up the possibility of approaching the county about putting an advanced green on the corner of 77 and the bypass, number three highway. And when Rob reported back, he said that, you know, it didn't warrant enough traffic. They kind of looked at a number of 11, I think I'm drawing from memory, Rob, but I think you said 11 vehicles, that want to make a left turn in order to facilitate putting the advance in. Last Monday, a week ago today, I was sitting at the intersection at 5:15, facing west, and there were 19 vehicles lined up heading north, 19 vehicles and trailers with, you know, lawnmowers, making, ready to make a left-hand turn onto the bypass. So, I mentioned that to Rob, and I think it's time to go back to the county again. And in the meantime, I'm going to park my bug out there, and I'm going to get some pictures to show them that there's, and I'm assuming if that happened last Monday at 5 o'clock, it's happening every day at 5:15. So, I'm going to go back out, and I told Rob I had some time with some pictures.
Just, just to your point about the charcoal, I noticed that down at Seacliff Park a lot too, that certain families are down there barbecuing a lot, and they take their, their own barbecues, and they dump the coals just kind of willy-nilly. So, I don't know what kind of ideas we can come up with, but I agree. I think that's something that has to be looked at, for sure. So, anything else from council under open? No? Real quick then, just to summarize what's happened in the last week or so, we did have a meeting with Hydro One. I don't think I've discussed that yet, have I? No? They're coming to present?
Yeah, in two weeks.
Okay. Well, we had a meeting with them anyway. They were here to tell us why they built the hydro line into Leamington, as if we didn't know. I kind of got a kick out of that initial start to the meeting. But ultimately, they were just here to tell us that the line is producing, the transmission station is up and running, and they are here now to tell us they're going to twin it. They're going to build a second one. That's how much demand on draw is, is growing. I think we all predicted that in the first place. We were telling them, you might as well build two while you're here. And I had to leave, so before I left, I got to talk just a little bit, and I said to him, I won't be surprised by the end of this meeting, you're telling us you're coming back in a year to build a third one. And they all kind of chuckled and said, well, it'll probably be sooner than that. So, the one point, and I'm not going to steal all their thunder because the CEO said they're coming in two weeks, but their projected draw for Leamington over the next five years is 1,000 megawatts? Increase, which is equivalent to the whole power source to the city of Hamilton. That's how much our industry is growing here in this municipality, so, so it's huge. I think we're, I think we're getting some attention down here, so. Anyway, that was kind of cool. Thank you to Deputy Mayor McDonald and Counselor Vraviki and Counselor Jacobs. All of us attended the CIB, judges' evening down at the, at the marina, and it was well-attended, and got a lot of awards handed out to a bunch of people. Yes, it was very hot. But, you know, went well. I think we're, we're sitting pretty good. Third one was, again, thank you to Counselor Vraviki and Jacobs for coming to the Essex Power Annual General Meeting. It's always such an exciting, thrilling, informative meeting, but not too many people show up to it, so it was kind of fun. people show up to it, so it was kind of fun having you guys there. Number four for me was, we did a hospice sod turning, I'm sure all of you've seen that in the media. We have a second building being put up, donated, paid for by a couple of our local families here, which is going to be the welcoming center and training center. Really, really quite excited, you tell, everybody's over the top, all the volunteers and all the people who work for hospice, just, just still can't believe how generous we are out here in the county. And the last one, I just really want to offer my personal congratulations and thanks to Kira and all the staff members who were involved in this weekend's free concert again, because it was super well-attended, and, and the music was fun, I think everybody had a great time, I didn't see any conflict going on there at all, and I hope it continues to roll out that way, so, good work. Deputy Mayor?
If I can add to that, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Verbeke mentioned the quartet from Salea, Mexico, and it was incredible music, it was beautiful, all violins, different types, it was excellent. They did three concerts in the community, I wish they would have been a little better attended. Daytime's a hard time to get people to come, but anyway, those of us that went enjoyed it. But I need to say something about the other music venues that we offer. Friday night, it's a bunch of us older folks, but it's great music, local music at, at the Marina, it's lovely. On this past Friday, there were 100 people there, I'm telling you, it's fantastic. And then the music on Sunday afternoon at Rick Atkins Park, I said to my husband, "We could spend the whole weekend doing nothing but going to music venues." It's an incredible thing that we offer here in our community, and it doesn't matter what music you like, there's bound to be something sooner or later, but I don't think those other two venues get enough.
Promotion?
Credit, promotion, they could use a teeny bit more, but anyway, it's great, and, and now that's becoming kind of our Friday night thing, it's a great night, it's free entertainment.
Yeah.
We could just use a little wine, that's all we could use, but just saying, just throwing that out there. But anyway, not in the park, but at the Marina. Anyway, great, great venues.
Agreed. Anything else? Anything from staff under open session? No? Statement, members, non-debatable? Motion to adjourn? Counselor Verbeke, Counselor Wilkinson, discussion on the motion, all in favor, and carried.